Yeah, as long as the light's on and it shows recording there.
Are we good?
Okay.
Well, it is eight oh three AM. I'll call meeting to order. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public comment?
Just me?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, I just want to give you guys an update. The legislature at the last minute passed some, uh, a lot of our changes to nine-one funding. I've kind of talked about that previously. We got the total amounts, um, back from them last week. And so I just wanted to give you guys an update real quick. The cost to run our nine-one center is about seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Of that, nine-one pays about three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The county pays a hundred and eighty-two thousand and the city pays two hundred and fourteen thousand. EMS, uh, would pay about sixty thousand. So, the majority, the much larger majority is the nine-one fund, which is paid by a dollar surcharge on all the phone lines in the county. All of that three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we expect a forty-five thousand dollar cut this year, approximately. We know that three quarters is going to be, um, charged thirty-five thousand dollars. And then the last quarter will be the catch-up. So, it could be ten thousand, it could be twenty thousand. We won't know until, uh, fourth quarter. So, big, big change. Now, financially, Cassouth County's in a pretty good position because we've saved our money over the years. As long as we're not forced by a radio tower, which we know there's coverage issues in the schools in the county and the cost of a radio tower is about two million dollars. So, um, that's an issue. But the smaller counties that don't have a, a fund balance are going to be forced to consolidate is what this amounts to. And so, we probably should start having those conversations because I think they're going to keep pulling money back more and more and putting more load on taxpayers and force and consolidation. There are a hundred and eleven call centers in the state of Iowa. I would guess they'll try and get that down to fifty at the most. So... That's what I've got.
What question? Is that the state's long-term intent is to have fewer call centers or what is the intent with the funding cut?
They won't come out and say that. However, over the last few years, they've consolidated all the software and hardware and services related to all the call centers. So, everybody's on the same equipment now. So, it'll be an easy transition when they decide to do that. Instead of working in Winnebago County, they'll just come to Cassouth or where that consolidated center is. So, uh, and I, I think there's some value there too. Uh, because right now, we have a very small mon- small amount of calls from one AM to six AM. In a seven-county area, we don't need seven dispatchers on. Three would be plenty. Uh, and on the other side of that, from twelve PM to ten PM, we could use more dispatchers on duty. So, there'll be some savings there. And then also, the equipment is very expensive. Um, hardware-software deployment is two hundred and fifty thousand for a new, new site. So, there's definitely some savings there if you have one call center instead of seven. So...
Sure.
Nobody will come out and say that, but I believe that is the intent. So, I believe during my tenure, there'll be consolidation of that.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
Hey.
Yep. Anyone else for public discussion? Not all in the chain motion to approve the agenda and meeting minutes? Motion by Garmin?
Second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion on the agenda or minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carried. All right, we're up to, it is after eight o'clock, so we have the public hearing for...
Your phone number for Jim Hudson, if he would like.
Okay.
Call her.
Appreciate it. Uh, we have voluntary annexation into DD one thirty-three. So, um, we need a, a motion to open the public hearing. First, okay, motion by Stecker, second by Haas. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. The public hearing is open. And do we?
Do we want to try to have Hudson call into the team's meeting? Because that would probably have better audio than a phone meeting.
I, I know I visited with him on the phone and he likes to use the phone, so...
Okay. I don't hear you right. I just...
We can try it on the phone. If it doesn't work, then we'll... We'll get around.
And evidently, the speaker phone that we have does not, is not operable anymore.
It does. It doesn't work well.
We've got this phone here that works. It's just not as good quality. Okay.
Hello?
Hey, Jim. This is, uh, Josh over here at the Cassouth County Court Room. Um, we're in session with our full board. Um, and Doug is present as well as some members of the public.
I can't really hear you well, Josh.
Hey, this is Kyle. Um, our full board is here. We've got our auditor and county engineer. And then we've got a couple of members of the public, um, ready for this and voluntary annexation into one thirty-three. Could you hear me all right there?
Yeah, I hear.
Okay, perfect.
Kyle, I was going to tell you, and I'd love you to hear me, um, you're going through a tremendous amount of procedure that isn't required by the drainage code. But your startup on this path, we might as well finish it this way. But, um, I read Colin Claybile's report. He recommends annexation. And, um, the, uh, system that there is can take on additional water without, uh, losing capacity. And because of that, it's fine to let somebody else into the district. That's kind of the short answer for everything. But, um, just tell them the board, go ahead and approve the annexation. Kyle has baked into it a classification of the, the area to be annexed, which is based upon comparables within the district as they exist. So, it's kind of a very quick procedure. It's hard to make much work out of it. Um, I've done several voluntary annexations without any hearing at all. And there's, there's a way in the code that spelled out in four sixty-eight point one nineteen how to do it that way. But you didn't start that way too well. You just finished this up today and move on. If there are questions, I'd try to answer those. I saw yesterday that I could key into this, but I don't want to sit on the phone for a couple of hours this morning and hear a lot of back and forth. Landowners can file objections, but the objections do not defeat the annexation. Kind of a mouthful. I was babbling a no-toll, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need a ton. If we got some questions, we can get to you. We've only got a couple of landowners in the room here. So, I think if we go ahead and get started, we can direct any questions to you as they come, if that works.
And I'll be handy. I thought I made it clear to Doug, and maybe I wasn't very forceful, but I would be available for questions. Um, and I still am. I'm around this morning. I, I do have another meeting I'm supposed to be attending in Palo Alto County. But it's kind of a thing, sort of a thing. It's a simple thing. Shouldn't use me. Anyhow, um, I will keep you on. You guys go ahead and discuss all this and go through it. If you have anything, let me know.
Doug, did you have any questions right away? Or do you want to...
Is, is this just for the annexation today?
It, yeah, it's for the annexation.
Yeah. It, it's both. It's baked into it is a classification. Colin has included that anytime there's an annexation, that land that comes into the district, the newly entered land needs to receive a classification so it can be assessed any expenses. Otherwise, you can't assess it. And Colin addresses all that in his report.
Yep. Colin, did you want to start with anything or, um...
Yeah, I mean, really, just, I guess, to kind of cover again what this project is. So, it's, it's, it kind of came about because there's a desire to do a private, um, tile system that's shared among multiple landowners. And it's at the upper end of Drainage District Seventy-two, which had a, had a petition and of, an improvement project that failed by remonstrance several years ago. Um, so the landowners are looking for a different way to drain some of those lands at the upper end. Um, one way of doing that is what is being proposed here is that, you know, you could cross Drainage District lines and drain out of Drainage District Seventy-two and into, uh, Drainage District One Thirty-three, uh, into the main open ditch. So, that's, that's where the voluntary annexation is coming from because they can't just go ahead and put the tile in, um, and cross Drainage District boundaries without going through this process. Basically, if they're going to be using the, the open ditch at DD One Thirty-three, they ought to be in the assessment schedule. And if, and if work is done on that ditch, they should, you know, rightfully help, help pay for that. Uh, so like Jim was saying, so there's, there's actually eight parcels that are included in this that are not currently on the assessment schedule for DD One Thirty-three that we're proposing for voluntary annexation. And then there's another four that are cur- already in the existing assessment schedule. But, uh, with this project, additional acres would drain into, um, DD One Thirty-three. And so, i- in the report, like Jim was saying, we've got this table with recommended, um, classifications. So, it, it basically fits into the existing assessment schedule for DD One Thirty-three. Um, that's, that's kind of the basics of it. If you've got the report in front of you, there's kind of a map there showing roughly what is being planned. Um, but yeah, that's, that's about all, all I have listed questions.
Hi, hi, this is, uh, Amber. I'm Board of Supervisor member. I did have one person reach out to me. They're actually not in either Drainage District. They're not in a Drainage District. They, uh, live, um, I believe it's, is it, if I'm saying it right, is it Kalamus Creek? Um, it goes, it goes through their property and, um, they have a very large pasture. Um, he was concerned, he's in Union Township, uh, Section Five. And he was concerned that this would, uh, flood his pasture with this extra, these extra acres. Can you address that at all? I told him...
Well, I'll, so I haven't looked all the way down that far to this point. I can, I can tell you that. So, it'd be hard for me to say definitively this morning. But I did look at, what I do have is that the existing, and I, again, I don't know that Kalamus Creek. So, it must be, I assume DD One Thirty-three, or main open ditch must empty into another natural stream. Um...
Yeah, which then in turn ends up...
And then that's what goes through the pasture.
Yeah, and then it ends up in the blacktop is what, um, essentially happens, but...
Yeah, so just in DD One Thirty-three, there, in the existing assessment schedule, there's over fourteen thousand acres of land. And so this, with this project, that area would be increased by two percent. So, eh, what I would do if I was looking at this Kalamus Creek is I would go down to wherever their pasture is and see how many, how many acres is coming in there. And then, um, look at, you know, these additional two hundred and eighty acres. How much, how much effect could that have on the water surface elevation, you know, during high flow? And most likely, it's going to be a negligible or, you know, very, very minimal effect on the water surface elevation that far downstream. But I, that's something that I could look at. I could look into further if there's concerns.
Well, I, the landowner is particularly very concerned, so, um, you know.
Colin?
Yeah, yeah.
Would you address the law? Um, it's generally accepted and it's a proper protocol that Drainage Districts can cast off water in any amount or any direction outside the district. The remedy for landowners that receive that is to get in a district and pile out their area. And it just kind of gets passed on down the line. So, there isn't anything that the great district can do about it. They go ahead and accept the annexation. If there is an additional water problem, then that can be addressed in the future.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that.
Those are remedies for that landowner is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, uh, this is Doug. Colin, uh, just, I'm curious. Um, your, the proposed tile main, um, and the district tile, the proposed tile main parallels the district tile of DD Seventy-two. Is there going to be any connections between the district tile and that proposed main tile?
And let's see, is Tad Wright still in there? Maybe he could probably...
Yeah, Tad, Tad is here.
So, at the very end of that, maybe where that blue line stops, that they will be tied together actually, just, um, with the junction box.
They would be tied together as you can use the blue line?
So, that way they can go either way. Yep.
Did you hear that, Colin?
Yeah, so, and that's, that's my understanding too. And I heard some of it was being said there. But it, it's not necessarily that the, the water in the DD Seventy-two tile will be turned around and go back west. They could, but basically, it could go either way. There's going to be a bo- a box there that, um, water could basically go either direction. So, it could, so from the DD Seventy-two main tile, um, it could continue going to the southeast. Or if it, if it can't take it that direction, then some of that water could end up going back to the west.
May I ask another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any possibility for land that is not within the boundary of the proposed tile, uh, any parcels that would be southeast for pro- for that water, uh, to be forced onto this proposed tile? Any water from the district tile being forced backward and going on the proposed tile, Colin?
Uh, yeah, I, I suppose I can't rule it out as a possibility that water... It, it would be a limited area, but I guess what I think you're saying is, could water back up that DD Seventy-two line and end up going, getting into this connection point where water could go either way and then going to the west? And the answer is that that could happen. I think that's, that's not really the intent of this. And I don't, I guess in my opinion, that doesn't need to be considered as far as voluntary act- annexation. If it's a possibility, you could maybe argue it either way. But in my mind, it's, it wouldn't be necessary just on the outside chance that water could go that way. If it, if it ever did, it shouldn't be very often. And it shouldn't be very much. But it, I can't rule it out that it, you know, it could possibly happen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions? Comments?
Doug, did you get all the info from Colin that you were looking for as far as size or coefficient that was being proposed for this project?
Oh, we, we spoke about it, yes.
Did you get answers to that or do you need further information?
This would still be existing.
It's, uh, it comes down to...
That's how I understand it.
What, what is adequate again?
Ring is a lie.
The question is, what is adequate?
Go this way, you'll get a lie.
Tad, what, do you know what size of pipes you guys are looking at?
Yeah, so it's a thirty-inch, um, main line up to the blacktop, very shortly past the blacktop. And then goes to the twenty-four at the very end. Um, overshooting four, three-quarter coefficient, overshooting four.
They're not taking the solid.
I think that the bottom end of it is closer to...
That's all I understand.
Okay.
And the top end. I, I think we might be a hair over three or a half.
Okay. And it's thirty just past the blacktop and then twenty-four?
Yeah. I guess Colin's... It's thirty up to the, uh, to the right black line. So, it's always past the blacktop, actually.
Okay.
For clarification, the, the current district tile west of the junction box, that'll still remain functioning, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Nope. Actually, all the county main will still be functioning.
Yeah, okay.
And it's essentially...
You're just tying them together.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Questions?
Do you have any other questions to answer, Doug? Anything else? Are you...
Yeah, this, we're, what we're talking about here is voluntary, my understanding this hearing is about voluntary annexation. And we're really not talking about the road crossing. Um, Colin emailed the Cassouth County Auditor yesterday with an application for the road crossing. So, that is a process that is starting. Would I be incorrect in that? In, in that, Colin, am I incorrect?
No, you're correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Jim? All we got on the phone? All right, I'll move to public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing by Stecker. Second by Garmin. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Roll call vote, please.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion carried. Hearing is closed. We'll need a... Need a motion to...
As far as, yeah, as far as next steps, do we need a motion to accept the report and voluntary annexation into One Thirty-three? Or Colin, or Jim, what do you got for advice here?
Yes, you need a motion to move forward.
Okay, that's what I thought. That would be associated with it. Do we need a separate motion for the classification schedule? Or can, is that all just part of the report as one item?
Well, Colin, you're, you're present, so I think you tie them all together. So, the law allows that you can have an annexation hearing at the same time you have a classification hearing and merge the two together. My father didn't like it very well. He says sometimes you couldn't tell what people were objecting to the annexation or to the classification. But I don't think there's much controversy on this. So, you can just pass them all together and, and that'll get you down the road. I also want to comment that the land that is coming in, which is already in another district, at some point in time when that district gets reclassified, they will be up to the Classification Commission to reduce the, the, uh, assessment for the land that came in. So, those people aren't doubly assessed in both, you know, the full assessment of both districts. It won't happen that way. But today, that won't, that won't, won't be under consideration.
Yep.
I may be putting a penny trail out there for you folks, but just so that people are concerned that they'll be doubly assessed.
Yeah, that would be handled separately.
Yep.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the report and voluntary annexation into DD One Thirty-three. I'll second.
There's a motion by Stecker. Second by Wachter. I'll let Tammy read the motion when she has it.
Okay, motion by Stecker and second by Wachter to accept the voluntary annexation report, to accept the report and voluntary annexation into DD One Thirty-three.
Would it be okay to say the report that includes a classification schedule?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want me to repeat it?
No, I think we all understand it, so... Uh, okay, uh, we got a motion second, so any discussion on that? If not, uh, is this, do we need roll call for this or no?
It's okay.
Okay, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, Colin.
Hey, Colin, quick question.
Colin, Colin just disappeared.
Colin's gone already.
He is?
Yeah, but he just got off right as he started saying his name.
He's trying to go to the other school. We've got a goofy thing going on in Palo Alto County this morning.
Probably, well you...
I'll wait for him on his tail.
Yeah, you get to have fun over there together then. Thanks. Talk to you later.
All right.
Bye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We're up to the claims, so we need a motion to... Motion regarding the claims, uh, or any questions?
Question. This, we're doing more because it's the end of the year.
Yeah, this is the last batch for the end of the fiscal year. So, that's why they're here today. Otherwise, normally, we wouldn't.
Right.
But it's just to catch those stragglers that didn't make it.
Okay. Motion by Haas to approve claims. Anybody want a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second by Garmin. Discussion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have four ayes and one abstention. Motion carried. Sorry.
Is it out of order to ask why in relation to one of the claims? So... Just out of precaution.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, it's not on the agenda to acknowledge the budget status report because this isn't a normal thing. But it is in your packet, so you can review it. We can't officially acknowledge it, but you guys can look at it if you have any questions.
Is the report in here?
Um, they have not turned it in yet.
They still didn't turn it in after I talked to them?
And he even came in, he came in and wanted a copy of what they turned in before, and I gave him all of that, and they still haven't come in. So, if he does come in, we'll do a handwritten. But as of right now, he... So if he does come in, we'll do a handwritten, but as of right now, he still has not come in.
Well, we need to discourage that from hanging in.
Yeah, and we, and, and Melissa has talked to him before about that, apparently there's some confusion about, um, when they come in and present.
Yes.
And, and what they actually need to do, so I thought that we explained that, but we'll see.
Well, that's, um, when I talked to Ben, I, he thought that that's what they were doing, and he said, no, that's actually for the next fiscal year, so...
Yeah.
He said, you need to submit something now!
Yeah, yeah, he came in and got the information, but they have not submitted anything yet, so...
Shoot.
And I told him that we needed it, that, but, we'll do a handwritten if he does come in, um, so that we can get it through this year, but hopefully he comes in.
Yeah, but it's already the, okay.
Sorry, twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Thanks for putting that together all year and the budget report, and it's been, been good to look at.
Good, I'm glad it's helpful.
I think, I think we've turned out pretty good at the end of the year, so...
I think so, too.
Okay, well, um, we, oh, EMS update, Phil, you're here.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um... Kind of briefly what's going on. Summertime, so we have vacations, but the positive side is with the amount of staff we have and the people coming back that were off, um, able to cover those, so. Things are going well, staff-wise, we do have one new hire, uh, we did hire a new paramedic, Liz Grimm, Liz Beth Grimm. She began her employment last Monday, June ninth. She had been working for us part-time, she was full-time at Hostel, working for us part-time, and made the changeover for us the whole time, so. Lot of experience, huge asset for us, so happy to have her on board. Um, Merlin Platt is back to work, he's still on light duty, but he's supposed to be released here the first part of July, so we'll have him back posted here coming up shortly. Call volume, our, our year-to-date call volume, I just pulled this number up yesterday, we're just under fourteen hundred calls for the year. Even with our downside on our transfers and calls recently, we're still over the fourteen hundreds, we're gonna be probably get close to fifteen hundred by the time the, the year ends. Uh, transfers, we only did ten in March, we did eighteen in April, and fifteen in May. So that's been running kind of steady in those numbers compared to the mid twenties where we used to be. Um, so we do have nine full-time staff in place, we do still have one position to fill, um, it's not an emergency right now with our nine, so we're, staff-wise, we're sitting really well. Our EFT class update, uh, nothing really changed on that, we still have five of the six of the past. The other one's still, um, studying to get, to get theirs completed. As far as orientation for those five, four of those we're wrapping up hopefully this week. Get them all signed off by the back plan, so we're good to go there. Still planning Public Safety Night out this fall, which will be in August. EMS Advisory Council, we met May sixth. We reviewed everything, I did come to you guys after that, we talked about the, the truck repair and ride-by and some other things, so. Our next Advisory Council meeting will be August fifth, we're meeting quarterly now. A vehicle update, we do have one ambulance that was involved in an accident over by Clear Lake on Interstate thirty-five. It was after the patient was delivered to Rochester, was on their way back, uh, we hit a deer on the interstate about three o'clock in the morning. Thank goodness it's pretty much grill, radiator, no side damage, I don't even think the hood is damaged, it's pretty much on the front. I did talk to Justin Till, just, um, something that him and I have been talking about for a while, but when we, we do the repairs to this truck, we're gonna put on a regular deer bumper rather than the old E M bumper back on the truck. So hopefully, if we do hit a deer in the future and we have a patient, we won't be stuck, we'll be able to continue going to where we're going, so. That's the plan with that. So the money that we'll get from the insurance coming towards the bumper will go towards replacing it with the, uh, with the other bumper. The adjuster was just there Friday, so I don't have any numbers or anything yet back on that. So I told the guy to get it done, because we still have the other truck that was in an accident here about a month ago down, so. With a bait coming up and ride-by coming up and everything, we're down two trucks right now, so we're gonna get one of them back on the road. Uh, facility update, air conditioners, our equipment did arrive, um, and I did pay for our equipment to get it on this year's budget. Uh, they're, they're working on finishing up the pieces they need to get it installed, so hopefully we can get that installed pretty soon. Um, hasn't been terrible out there, because it's a two-unit system, so we're able to use fans to move the air into the site that doesn't have, um, air conditioning, so. We've been able to keep it in the lower to mid seventies out there, and we did buy a dehumidifier and put in there to kind of keep the humidity down, so. It's been okay, but it'd be nice when we get that, the unit in, so hopefully the other one keeps hanging in there for a while. We're kind of worried about it over this hot weekend, but it, it survived. Financials, uh, our ransom numbers yesterday, our projected revenue from our, from our levy is, was one point, uh, three, two, four, five, seven, eight, so one million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, five, seventy-eight. To date, we've actually received one million, three, twenty-two, six, seventy-five, so we're nineteen hundred dollars under projected, so pretty much a wash there. Our other income, our call revenue income, we, and, um, grants and, um, CPR stuff, we projected six hundred and seventy-eight, four, twenty-two, and our income to date is eight oh six, five, twenty, so a hundred and twenty thousand above, um, projected income on that side, so. That was good, our total projected was two million, twelve, and our received to date is two million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one ninety-five, so to date, we're a hundred and seventeen thousand above projected revenue. On the expense side, to date, we're at one point, six, one, nine, one, seventy-five, so eighty-five percent of our, our budget. We ju, and with our claims data, there's about fifty-four thousand, um, in there, so. We're gonna finish eighty-five, eighty-six percent under a budget on our expenses. Our Indian Fund balance should be around three ninety with an increase, um, and anything else, we should have about three hundred and ninety thousand, um, fund balance remaining at the end of this year. Of that, um, two hundred and twenty was, was planned for vehicle replacement, which we'll carry forward, so that'll leave us, it's about three ninety, but about a hundred and seventy, um, that's not earmarked for, for, for any particular project. Plus our financials are looking right now for three end of the year, but obviously lots of changes and some stuff this week, wrap things up here going forward, so. Any questions?
Who's putting in the air conditioner?
I...
I don't care, who we talk to, it doesn't matter.
Yep. So the new units are gonna be rooftop units versus what we had, because they're in the suspended ceiling, you can't change the filters, and this is just gonna be a, a better plan. Plus the Hostel's looking at ex, expansion, where our air conditioner unit's currently set, I'm looking at possibly building there someday, so this kind of cleans that area up as well. So they're in the process of building the, the things that, um, mounts or the, whatever, come through the roof on the top.
Any questions for Phil? Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
See you later.
Uh, Nick, we're up to you with the tax sales certificate assignment in Lead Yard.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yeah. This is Captain Sick, and, uh, he is interested in taking assignment to a parcel in the city of Lead Yard. That's on tax sales, took it to the county for quite some time, it's an unknown owner, so, um, it's, it's just a parcel that kind of, they just kind of pop up, and, uh, and, you know, we just don't see quarter sections do that, but, uh, this is a very small parcel. And right now, I'll, I'll kind of let you explain what you're doing here.
Is the address real, is it seven oh nine, or?
Well, this doesn't have an address.
Okay.
This little parcel.
Yeah.
Did y'all see a map of it?
Yeah, and looked at it.
Okay.
Yeah, um, it's on railroad, it's on railroad drag, and it's, uh, Carolyn Jurgensen, it's her property, I'm buying it from her. And when I was, I got all the paperwork to get the mortgage and everything up to date over at Fitzgivens in Estoril. And, uh, when they were going through it, I noticed that this was unknown, and it's, it's by my dad's farm and everything, and what I'd like to do is add this with what I'm buying, and so it's all one, and I figured you guys might like the tax money from it, too.
Why, why is...
I mean, I know it's not much, I'm just, I'm just being sarcastic.
It's like, yeah, four bucks a year, but it's...
There's, I think there's some drainage, I mean, I'm willing to cover that as well.
Do you have those balances, Nick?
Yeah, I do. The drainage on it looks like, uh, is fifty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents, and then, um, the, the real estate is a hundred and forty-two dollars, and I, I talked to Kyle and, uh, was gonna see about what the board would think about what we have been kind of doing, just to help it get cleaned up and things like that, is once he takes deed to it, abate, uh, just the property tax part of it, a hundred and forty-two dollars, or, and then, and then, like you said, you would pay the drainage on it, and kind of start with a new slate.
We've been going the same forever.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I, I'd make a motion to assign the tax sales certificate and abate the back taxes once deed is transferred, um, so... Yeah, the county drain, the county taxes, the drainage ones cannot be abated.
Right, right, the Kyle, the cities will get those taken care of.
Do you want me to pay that once it's all cleared up, the, uh?
No, what we usually do is, um... What we have done in the past is, you would pay that right away, and then, I mean, then the assignment would take place, and then...
So, okay, you want me to pay today, or, or do I wait until all the paperwork's?
Well, we should probably finish the motion and stuff.
Yeah.
You can work with Nick after.
Right, that's all, I didn't know if it was something you wanted me to do today, that's...
Yeah, we were talking about it, uh, we could...
I'll second it. And then, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Well, then, yeah, just work with Nick.
Nevermind.
Y'all help with your...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, Ian. Did you get one?
No, it's okay.
Or we can share, it's in the packet, too.
It's okay. I have one here, so you...
Oh, you do, okay.
I have one in my packet.
We got just one, oh, okay. I have one in here.
Thanks.
You should lose the burden. Okay, go ahead, Derek, yeah.
All right, so the last few years, we've been working on getting our insurance for cyber liability increased, our current coverage is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Some of the things that we've had to do to be eligible to increase that is increase our passwords to sixteen characters, and also to do the dual factor implementation, which we're about ninety-five percent done with that rollout. Um, working with Tammy's office, we've got pricing on increasing that coverage, so our cost goes from forty-five hundred to ten thousand, three oh six, and I'm looking for a motion to, to get that, um, coverage increased, so, um, a million dollars does not go very far, uh, in our line of work. We did try and get one point five million, but the, um, increase there was significantly more, so, um, that's kind of where we're at with that.
What's cyber liability?
So it covers if we get hacked and we lose data and we have to pay for credit monitoring, uh, for whoever, whoever's data got out. It would cover if we transferred five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a bad guy instead of to the city, um, something like that, so...
So ransom, it, would it do ransom?
Ransomware, yep, yep, all that, all that stuff, so, um, yeah, it doesn't go very far.
I'd be the first one to tell you that I have no idea what my insurance would pay for, my insurance, you know, you know, I, I write the check and everything, and everybody, and then, you know, it's kind of a common knowledge thing that you don't know what you have until you need it, or...
Yeah, there's, you know what you have. Yeah, there's cyber exclusions on a lot of policies out there, but we, we have car, a small amount of coverage now, so...
Uh, I don't think we need to look very far to know that
No.
the cyber threat is, even in the last few days, has increased, so, yeah, a million dollars if something happens, it's not gonna go very far.
We'll take a motion to any effect, then.
I'll move to approve the increase.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Stecker, second by Garmin, to approve the increase. Any discussion?
That's effective July first, or?
Yep.
Actually, I'm sorry, apologize for stupid questions.
No, you're...
Yeah, I missed it. It's more a part that we have the coverage than the start, so...
Nah, it's a couple days away.
Okay. Well, um, no further discussion, all in favor of approving the increase, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're up to discussion decision for loss transfer made by the Cassuth County Auditor.
Just acknowledged.
Oh, sorry, okay, this is listed different on my sheet here.
Yeah.
Are we gonna acknowledge the five hundred thousand dollars in local option sales tax? Okay, acknowledged. All righty, uh, okay, discussion decision, approval of FY twenty-five, twenty-six appropriation resolution, number zero six, dash twenty-four, dash twenty-five, dash zero one.
This is a resolution we do every year, so that we can appropriate the funds that, um, were approved in the budget, so, um, that's what this resolution is.
You need me to read it?
Um...
Or no?
You don't have to, everybody has it in their bucket, unless somebody wants it, right?
I don't know if anybody in the public needs to read it.
Looks like we got a big crowd, so I would say...
All right, we'll take a motion to approve it, then. So, motion by Wachter.
Second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, roll call vote, please.
Haze.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah.
Yes, motion carried. And next we have a, uh, discussion decision approval of wage scale resolution, oh, six, twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, two, for FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
So this is the resolution that has the four percent, um, raise in the starting six months and one-year salaries that are listed. It also, um, shows the change in the longevity wording, um, to for current, for employees currently receiving longevity as follows. The only thing that I changed is I did take out full-time, um, because we do have an employee that's not full-time that gets longevity, so we didn't want to exclude them, so, um, that, um, that is what that resolution is.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Stecker to approve.
Second.
Second by Haze. Discussion. Can I roll call vote, please?
Haze.
Yes.
Garmin.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Wachter.
Yes.
Nah. Matt.
Yes. Motion carried. Discussion decision, Microsoft Office three sixty-five annual renewal. And I guess the next three.
Can I call Doug and say we'll be ready?
This time number, yeah, it won't take very long.
Ten minutes.
Can we?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take a seven minute break.
Seven minutes?
I told him no more five minutes. I said, I need maybe seven.
Alright, we grab one of the fastest ones now.
Seven, okay.
Fifteen's good too.
Yeah.
I'll compromise at ten.
Okay, that's.
We're done with those. Okay.
Alright, so it's that time of year again, we'll have a couple agenda items for our annual renewals. This particular one is for our Office three sixty-five licenses. There are three portions of this sheet. The top portion is Cassuth County Courthouse, so that's everyone in this building, the sheriff's department, EMS. Right now, um, that portion comes out to be twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The PD is just their portion alone. We don't cover any of that. And then dispatch, we pay a portion of those. And so I'm looking for a motion for twenty-eight thousand eight hundred, which covers the courthouse portion and our share of the dispatch portion. This is for Word, Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint, all the software that we use day to day, so. The price stayed the same as last year, surprisingly for that, so. And then this is um, in the Government Committee Cloud or GCC. So there's three data centers in the US. It's only American citizens that work at those data centers. It is completely segmented from the uh, citizen available version of Office three sixty-five, so it's significantly more locked down. And we have to be in the GCC, Government Committee Cloud to meet some um, requirements, including CGIS, which is law enforcement um, requirement, so. So what we need for licenses there, so.
So do we roughly pay half of the dispatch then or?
Thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight percent?
Correct, yep. The actual total comes out to be twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-one seconds. Twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, motion, motion by Stecker to approve. Second by Haas. Howard Beatya. Uh, alright, any discussion? If not any further, we'll, all in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carried.
Document locator.
We got document locator and.
Yeah.
So we've got uh, two pieces of software that also run the courthouse. One is for solutions, which runs auditor, accessory recorder, treasurer. Part of that software also includes a package called document locator. It's built separately. The annual renewal for that is eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. We bill the assessor for a portion of that, so their portion is nine hundred and twenty dollars. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the eleven three forty-five. It's an annual license. It covers all the um, desktop installs for all the users on this floor, so. Uh, it's actually twenty-eight full licenses and then five uh, web clients, so it's a cheaper license uh, where we can use those on the public computer, so.
Okay, motion by Garmin.
Second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion on approving? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Motion carried.
I also should've shared that the Microsoft Office licenses, I also billed the assessor back for a thousand seventy-six dollars on that.
Okay, uh, approval of solutions contract is next.
Yep, so the annual solutions license agreement, we've had a lot of discussions about that. Our cost this year in the motion I'm looking for is approval for sixty thousand dollars and to prove, to sign the license agreement. It's an annual license, includes every office and the support contracts for the server downstairs as well, so. Uh, it's an annual renewal and we've talked a lot about this and there's no, um, it runs our business, so. No choice.
And that'd be for the chair to sign?
Yes, correct.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have motion by Stecker to approve. Second by Wacter. Discussion. Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Ten minute break and then.
Alright, yeah, we, yeah, we'll be up to Doug next, so ten minute break. Come back at nine-ten. Give you eleven minutes.
Dean, what's he gonna do?
You're gonna be in timeout.
Hey, Doug, is Josh up here in the boardroom? We're taking a ten minute break and then we'll be up to you. Yep. Bye.
I'm still regretting this chair purchase.
She just found an air she made last week, so it just have to be re-signed.
We'll need the brakes today.
Yes, we will need the brakes today. I agree.
Hi Molly.
Good morning.
See, I'm here, Doug, yeah. I'm not offended. Don't take those seats till some fly up in jugs here in this resolution.
Oh shit.
I, I, again, I'm not.
We're processing. You go to the, go to the last one. Sorry.
No, no.
No, you. I.
I, yeah.
I tried to keep that.
Doesn't bother me in the slightest, but if you, I just thought if it was something you wanted to correct.
I will get that.
I am not least sensitive to anything like that at all. I don't think. Maybe I'm not smart.
Well, no, just. Yeah, I apologize.
So.
Sounds like we're gonna have a wet week.
I uh, I'm not sure. I think I guessed right yesterday morning and sprayed. It was an hour after I got done before it rained a little bit.
Oh, really?
Then I guessed wrong yesterday afternoon. I did not go out, so I, I got. One fifth, I, I don't even know, I got a half sprayer full to spray yet and I'll be done.
How long or what do you need between the end of spring?
Officially, it's probably a couple hours.
Yeah.
I think, I think the answer to the question is it depends on the weather and everything and I uh. It is yesterday afternoon, really didn't, where I was at anyway, it really never rained enough to do anything. It spit and. I wish now I would've gone out yesterday afternoon. There was a whole lot of people spraying for sure.
Well, I'm saying it's always.
Yeah, I know. Tomorrow, this aft, this afternoon is looking favorable.
That um, yeah, you sit there and you can second guess and, but someday you have to go out.
Just do it.
Go it, do it. If you're wrong, you're wrong. I always, I may have told you, but Bob Busher, did you know Bob Busher? He the. The orth.
Actually, I asked Tammy.
Yeah, I know, this was like twenty years ago.
Oh.
They decided, they had a concrete block foundation and they decided.
Oh, is it?
Ingress.
We love it.
And all of a sudden, he and I think one of his grandsons, they got a shovel, wheelbarrow, and then they started digging.
Yep.
And, you know, I would've thought, I would've thought about it as long as what it took them to figure out how I was gonna do it. They just went out and started and.
We were gonna do.
You know, got it done.
Oh, were you?
Yeah.
So.
My uncle always.
The strike my face, it's really.
It gets expensive if you make mistakes sometimes.
Yeah, that, that doesn't mean you got ninety percent chance of rain, you're gonna go out and go. But yeah, there's times where, well, we gotta get it done. And I'm sure, you know, like a lot of things, you can uh. You gotta get it before things have an opportunity to get worse.
Yeah, hear that? I'm gonna go spray this afternoon. Three o'clock, you better be out of here.
I think we got cut off time at three fifteen, so.
What was it, three fifteen?
Three.
Three. Yeah. Tammy's got interviews at three thirty, so she's got to set over that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not a standing order. It's something she has to do today.
Yeah.
Well, we can't really do things on a thousand per person, so.
No, unless you had somebody in here, but I'm not sure who's sitting in on the interviews, so. Maybe we'll bring out one in time. Three fifteen is okay.
Yep.
Two thirty would be better. I pushed it.
Hey, you never know.
I wouldn't be too optimistic. No. I won't hold my breath. Is it raining out there?
Pardon me?
Is it raining out there?
It doesn't work like it, yeah, it's cloudy, but I don't see any wetness. Dance on the.
Cloud's rolling in, looked like it was gonna just dump on us, but.
Nothing on the radar, just looking at that.
Seemed wetter at home than as I drove up this way.
Yeah, I've noticed.
From last night, 'cause it was raining when I got up. This year, watching the radar and stuff like that and the storms have just been bypassing Algonah.
I don't think, right far just west of town, though the home place, I don't think we've had a rain over one inch there yet.
Really?
Oh, really?
Yeah, just watching the radars, it's always seems to be like either splitting and going around Algonah or just passing just south or passing just north.
Oh, when I got up, I got up early this morning, but it was. Oh, when I got up, I got up early this morning, but it was, it was raining when I got up this morning. Sway City's been getting hammered this year already.
Especially in North Town, which.
Bancroft, Bancroft did too.
Yeah, Bancroft.
They were getting some heavy rains.
I was, I was kinda right in the sweet spot between two of them, I did not get anything near as heavy as either of those, but my grandparents' place where I about fell, but had. Three and a half engaged the one time.
Cool.
So, yeah, I mean, but. I, I don't know how I've been right in the middle of the two, but I've missed them surprisingly.
The rain that yesterday was pretty nice, I mean, it was heavy, it was.
It was negligible.
Yeah. I didn't have to water my garden.
Yeah, we haven't had to water the garden a lot.
Do you want me to sign the claims from last week, or is it all good?
Um, we talked about it last week, and we said you can do it either way, because there was three, it's fine, um. But if you want to, you should.
Okay, well, if it's fine, whatever, I just, you wanted me to.
Um, let me talk with Brittany.
You wrote it on it, it's in the record.
Okay, well, we're all back and. Tammy, about ready to roll, okay, okay, Doug, we're up to discussion decision to approve secondary road department equipment purchase.
But yeah, I requested, uh, uh, quotes for replacing one of our nine fifty loaders. And replacing it with another nine fifty loader Caterpillar, and then I requested a quote for four motor graders. Three of those motor graders have very high mileage, and then one was involved in the collision, and that has been totaled by the insurance company, so. Uh, all of these would be traded, all the machines would be traded in, um, and I asked for a price from two Caterpillar dealers for that, so. Uh, I do have in your packet of information, uh, electronic, if you would like, I do have. If you'd like to just write down some notes for yourself, right here, I'll open up the quotes and, uh, there'll be the information. I just had a spot for the nine fifty motor on one side, and then the cost for the, for the net cost, the net purchase price. Cost for the, uh, motor graders on the other side, so. I'll go ahead and open those quotes, one is from all four for, um, Caterpillar, and the other is from Ziggler Caterpillar, so I'll start off with the loader.
The side with the two, the two sections, they're both supposed to be motor graders, you're looking for two motor graders?
Four motor graders.
Or, you said?
There's a price for a single unit and a spot for all fours total.
Well, one says wheel loader, the other says caterpillar, uh, motor graders.
I'm sorry, on the reverse side, that should say. I guess.
A little redundant.
Yeah, there's redundancy, if you look at the second side, there's the net purchase for the Caterpillar nine fifty and the Caterpillar one forty, you can just look at this sheet with two.
Okay, okay, nope, no worries, I just wanna.
I see what you're saying.
Make sure I'm on the same page.
Apologize for that error.
No worries.
Okay, so this would be, uh, all four for, uh, for the wheel loader. So the price new for the piece of equipment is three hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. They would give us a trade credit of forty-five thousand, so the purchase price is thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Which one is this for?
This is for the loader, all four for.
Shouldn't it be three hundred and some thousand?
What's your total?
The purchase price is three hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. The trade credit is forty-five thousand, so the net purchase price is three hundred thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Nine eighty-eight?
Three, three hundred thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, the purchase price, net purchase price. And then from Ziggler Caterpillar. The purchase price for the wheel loader would be three hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars. Uh, trade credit of forty-six thousand four hundred, giving a net purchase price of three hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars. For a purchase price, three twenty-four nine five three. And then for the motor graders, all four for. They have a purchase price for four one forty motor graders, one million six hundred sixty thousand forty-eight dollars. And then we have four motor graders that are, they are trading in individually, uh, one would be traded in for sixty thousand. Another one sixty-five thousand, and a third one for seventy thousand, and then the one that was damaged in the, uh, in the rail event, thirty thousand, so the net purchase price is. One million four hundred thirty-five thousand forty-eight dollars.
Repeat that last number, please.
One million four hundred thirty-five thousand forty-eight dollars.
Thank you.
And then from Ziggler. Their purchase price for the four motor graders are one million six hundred forty-one thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, trade of one motor grader for sixty-two thousand seven hundred, trade for a second motor grader sixty-six thousand eight hundred. Trade for the third motor grader is seventy-two thousand three hundred dollars, and trade credit for the, uh, machine that was damaged, thirty-four thousand three hundred. Uh, giving a net purchase price of one million four hundred five thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Will you repeat that last number, one?
Yes, one million four hundred five thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. I just. Double check. Yeah, so I would recommend that Cassuth County, uh, purchase, uh, the loader per the quote of Ziggler and the. Motor graders per the quote of Ziggler.
Okay. Any motion to, is there effect? Okay, we have a motion by Haas. And a second for discussion. Second by Carmen. Discussion, yeah, totally.
Yeah, I'd like to ask why we can't get quotes for other machines from other brands, um, I know I've asked this before, but, I mean, just doing the math, they were. Ballpark two percent off on both prices, and I don't believe you can buy from another Caterpillar dealer that you're not in the area for anyway, regardless of price, so. I don't really believe that they're competitive quotes.
I haven't been in here a long time, but, I mean, they're, Ziggler and Alter, Altorfer are never much different. I mean, and Ziggler's always just a little under Altorfer. And the reason is, and, and I mean. I won't, I'm not gonna say who, but I've got a friend that works with the former CEO of Ziggler, and they work, they, they talk, they work together, and they, they know what they're doing with. Governments and. I guess. I would like to see, and I know we've, we went round and round about this before, but I'd like to see quotes from other companies to make it more competitive. I, because it's, it's pretty obvious, we already know who we want to buy from, and that's fine, and if they're quality equipment, that's fine, but I want to make sure we're getting the best price that we can, so. I mean, it's pretty clear which option to choose here, between the two, but. It seems like we go through the same thing every time. Yeah, it does.
May I just mention that there are advantages, first of all, you gotta look at the price, not the initial purchase price, but the price of that machine over lifetime. Um, there are prices, uh, that, whether that machine is running or whether it's not running. And you also have to look at whether that machine would be compatible with the equipment that Cassuth County already has. For example, loader, uh, we have attachments that we put on our loaders, snowmowers, loader buckets, different blades. Uh, you start bringing in different types of equipment, you're gonna have to have. One, each piece of equipment set up with different types of attachments, ground gauging equipment, same with motor graders. Whether you can put a V plow on it, if your V plow gets damaged, well, then you have a piece of equipment that you might not be able to put another V plow on. Uh, fluids, uh, just regular intervals of maintenance, different machines cause, have different intervals of maintenance. But you gotta look at it, not just the purchase price, but you gotta look at it as a machine and overall cost, and finally, trade value. After you have a machine that has twelve thousand hours and is over twenty years old, um, we have some value, machines that have value to them. So, yes, there's a purchase price, the machine, I confidently say that over the lifetime, Caterpillar. Is a quality machine, uh, we have a good relationship with them, and, uh, that is the reason we continue to go with them.
And I, and my point was not that we shouldn't have Caterpillar equipment, and I think we should maintain a good relationship with them, but it's kinda like getting a quote from Chemna's in Algonah, and then going to get a quote from Chemna's in Ford Dodge, it's. It's not gonna be, I mean, that's the same company that we're getting quotes from, it's just two different dealers, so it's, my, my point is that. Uh, farming is the same thing, if you got John Deere, and you got Case, and you got New Holland, yeah, they're gonna have different parts, they're gonna have different fluids, they're gonna have different attachments, et cetera, but. I'm just looking for a better price, I know we've, again, we've been through this in the boardroom before, but that, that was all my point, I, there's nothing wrong with Caterpillar equipment.
I will remind the board that, uh, we did purchase a loader at the transfer station, I went through and put together. All the qualifications for multiple bids, which took quite a bit of time, and Caterpillar was, well. So I went through and did all the stuff, it takes up time for the engineer's office to do all of that as well.
Well, that's part of the process, yep. Anyway, that was my only comments. You through the discussion?
I have just, I have a guy.
I guess I'd also ask from a budget perspective, how much will remain after these equipment purchases in that line item?
Do we have two million in the line item, or?
I forget what we have. One for the loader, and some motor grader.
Will this come out of the current fiscal year, or the next fiscal year, I'm assuming, right?
This will be paid for when they are delivered.
Sure, yep.
Which is, Ziggler has December as a.
Estimated.
Estimated date. Uh, one is five to six months, the loader, five to six months from the order, and December on the, um, motor grader.
Is there any other equipment purchases that are planned after these for this budget year?
Yes, we will be getting a check from an insurance company, I would like to increase, uh, amend the budget so that equipment can be purchased using that money for that. That insurance claim, and then, yes, I'd like to get some trucks, we need to get truck chassis as well.
Sure, yep.
So if I remember right from our conversations during the budget about equipment, if we were on a normal rotation, we would need one point two five motor graders per year on average, right?
If we were keeping up, yes.
So why do we have three plus one from an insurance?
We have, well, one, with given insurance, if something gets totaled, you don't have any control over that.
I get that, but we're still looking at three outside of the insurance issue.
We have not kept up on our equipment replacement in the past, as, from two thousand eighteen to present, we've seen seventy percent. Eighty percent increases in construction costs and equipment. It's, and without revenue, you cannot purchase. That's a, it, it just doesn't work.
I don't know if this is the time to catch up, but I've said that.
Oh, you don't? When is the time to catch up then? When we aren't providing any service? I mean, the people want roads to be maintained, they want snow to be removed, um, if, I, I would make a bet that if. Snow is not being removed, and we say, well, we have three machines that are broke down. They would ask why they're not being repaired, why, why isn't going, I mean, we gotta have good equipment. Or you better be prepared to tell the citizens of Cassuth County that we have decided to lower the level of service.
So what, what is the history of replacement, since whatever seventeen eighteen, I mean, three years that we bought? I know we gotta list somewhere.
Yeah, I'll get it, you're quick. Uh, we have one twenty eighteen, we have one twenty twenty-three, or three twenty twenty-threes, and one twenty twenty-four, so we've purchased five since two thousand eighteen.
Part of that was COVID, everything was so backlogged, too. Part of that was COVID, everything was so backlogged and too.
Did, did you say what the, you, you said ten, twelve thousand hours on each of these graders, did you say what year they were?
Just get in the packet here, nineteen ninety-seven Caterpillar, nineteen ninety-nine Caterpillar, uh, and then two, some are two thousand three.
Um, the first machine being traded in was a, uh, nineteen ninety-seven Caterpillar one forty-eight with twelve thousand five hundred forty hours. Uh, the second machine, nineteen ninety-nine Caterpillar one forty-eight with eleven thousand four hundred forty hours. The third machine, one forty-four, was a two thousand three Caterpillar one forty-eight with twelve thousand seven hundred fifty hours. And the machine that was damaged is a two thousand three one forty-eight with nine thousand six hundred eighty hours. That was all June fourth. June fourth for twenty twenty-five, they've been operating it. That was the hours on that.
I didn't see that before, I thought I looked through.
Your own.
Not about him, yeah.
At one time, my understanding in nineteen seventy-nine, Cassuth County had multiple brands of motor graders. Nineteen seventy-nine was a very bad snow year, when you talk to people that were
Seventy-eight, seventy-nine was very, very bad, no doubt about it.
And there were machines that were broken down, there were machines that could not get the parts for, and it wasn't just Cassuth County. This is a snow year all over the North Central Iowa. And Caterpillar was the one machine that kept running during that. They were able to repair, get, get equipment. And I believe at that time, the board instructed the county engineer to give rid of everything. My understanding was to go all Caterpillar after that event.
Any further discussion on the bids? And if not?
Are we doing all of it together?
Or, yeah, do we need one motion or two motions?
We already have a motion. But Haas and Garmin, so it, is your motion?
Oh, we already have a motion, that's right.
You have a motion, um, I, I was just kind of looking at the very first thing up here, but it's, however you guys want to do it.
Yeah, you just tell me and, um.
I would assume we could, it's one item, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, considering they're both with the same company now as well.
Either way, but yeah, yeah.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just one motion or?
Yeah, so we'll do a roll call vote please then.
Okay, Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Wachter?
Yes.
Nath?
No. Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
So thank you Doug very much.
Um. Again, I apologize for not seeing this before, but in the motion, in the, in the paperwork there, it's a Caterpillar nine fifty high lift motor grader.
Oh.
High forward.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, I fixed it online.
Okay, all right. I, I didn't even see that, so I don't know why not, let's sort of look through it.
Okay, we are after nine thirty, we need to call, uh, Winnebago County for the mental health advocate, and then we'll come back to you Doug on the other items, so. If, let's see, we had the number here somewhere. There we go. Josh, if you could call that number please.
And they had two things on their agenda because they first were gonna be dissolving the contract they currently had with, between them, and then they were gonna have the twenty-eight E discussion, so I don't know if they'll be done with the first part or not, in just waiting for us or not.
Cassuth County. Oh, getting a call from Bill Jensen right now.
Hey guys, this is Cassuth County here.
Okay, thanks for joining.
Yep, we just got done with our other item, um, are you guys all ready or where are you guys at?
Yep, we're ready.
I think we are too here, we got our full board and auditor, um, so we're ready to roll.
Do you have any who's there, Doug?
Yep, we got Carter, uh, Tammy Eden, our auditor, Carter Nath, Josh Wachter, Kyle Stecker, Amber Garmin, and Howard Haas. Do you guys have your full board, do you want to go through your list?
Um, we got Scott Myers, engineers, I know I have Tommy Carter, Susan Smith, supervisor, Phil Zedl, supervisor today, Jerry supervisor, and Mike Drusler, deputy chief deputy.
Perfect, sounds good. All right, do you guys want to start on stuff for the twenty-eight E or, um?
We need to discuss, uh, dissolving the, the first twenty-eight E.
Okay. We're, we're not part of that, right?
I believe it was two, two and up.
Yeah, you're sure we have it, so we must have, uh, already included you guys in on this somehow.
Okay.
For what?
And then, yeah, go ahead on conversation with that.
You guys have a chance to look over the new agreement?
Yep, we've got that in our folder here.
Yeah, we, we don't have, nobody got any issues with it as far as, uh, going forward with it, before we dissolve the old one, I guess.
Does not look like there's any questions or concerns here.
Are you talking with the old one or the new one?
Well, I'm talking about having any issues with the new one, so, I mean, we should discuss that before we dissolve the old one, I guess.
Yeah, I could do that. We're not starting, it's, um, it's a new, there's a couple of changes coming in, uh, the new one. The new one, so we talked about, um, on Monday, the, again, the new one, but we're still like, we're
Can we, um, I guess if there's only a couple small changes, do you know what those are for today's purposes, or is that something we still need to work on?
Um, they wanted to appoint an administrator for my contract for the twenty-eight.
Okay.
There was up there who, who wanted to appoint. I said, I could do it or we can tell, we want to do it, just keep, uh, on that order. But I can't actually go to the board.
Well, today the board order exists, um, I guess we got our last meeting.
Would, I guess, if that's all we got to do, I mean, could we authorize our chairs of each county to execute the agreement once it's completed? If, if it's satisfactory, I mean, I don't have any concern with the, who the administrator is.
This is Rachel Martinez from Hancock County, I'm the county attorney. Um, one of the things that I have noted, at least for Hancock County, was the way things were gonna be billed out or paid, it seemed like it'd be a lot of input could be worked. Um, my recommendation would be, it's kind of how it was, where things get billed to the state rather than sending the bill to each individual county, having us write a check and then getting reimbursed later, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, I think we could use the language so that way, it happened Winnebago County, but that they would bill the state, if for some reason something isn't covered by the state, then of course Hancock County would then cover what our county owes. But I don't think it makes the most sense in the agreement that each of our counties get billed, and then our auditor has to cut checks to that, and then a while later we get a check back, and then I don't understand that process. That would be the main change I would recommend.
Sounds the same.
Some of the concerns in all our Isaac meetings, but, you know, that are we gonna get reimbursed or we're gonna, we put it to the state, so. I don't know if that ever got worked out, whether we can bill it to the state or not, I mean, directly.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, Terry, I know, I know I heard that in conversations as well, but I don't know if the state has an answer for that, or if there has been an answer, but I guess from a language perspective, I, I would probably agree with the county attorney that we would have that as kind of our first option, and if something doesn't get paid, then the counties could handle it, but I don't know.
Will that put too much delay in the payment process? Not that the, the state, you know, takes a while. Just to let you know what they're not doing. Does that just connect us for making sure that it's paid?
Right.
Ultimately, it puts, this, this is Ray Hahn from Hancock County, ultimately it puts the responsibility on the state, the state wants to take the mental health region over, which they have, it puts first responsibility on the state to take care of the problem. They want the system, they're taking it over, we've all been, we've all dealt with this mental health system, put it on the stage to take care of the bills first of all. That, that's my feeling, we've all dealt with this, throw it at the state first of all. They want it to pay care.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Gary.
We didn't know where to send the bill to yet. I mean, I mean, they, 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 last, last night, I mean, I should have called, uh, Melissa, but, uh, last I heard, we still didn't have any direction on who we send the bill to for the advocate.
Just send it to the governor's office.
Yeah, there you go. She's not gonna run against, you know, Gary. I think for now, we almost have to do it the way it is. And in the future, once we have some direction on where to send it to, and, and know that there isn't gonna be some kind of a delay in payment, I mean, yeah, I, I agree, it seems to be a little redundant to do it this way, but that until we have the direction, we almost have to.
Today, we're still a lot, we're doing that, a lot of, there were a lot of questions, we didn't get those, uh, half of it. So that's why we were encouraged to put the money, our budget, to cover it, because it doesn't matter, figured out. So you're right, we're probably gonna have to stick with that, but now we know to make a change, once you get the direction for you to go.
Okay, this is the solid, if you did it that way with your bill, it's ordinary, how would, I'm not sure how this would work or how he would submit it. I guess maybe we just wait until we have more direction from the state or from. I truly don't know how this is all supposed to work, you know? I, I mean, either Carla, my concern is I think we have to have it done by July one.
Yeah, because the region is, is being funded to reach, now the region is dissolved, that's what's hurting us, so.
Our last meeting is next Monday.
Yeah, exactly, but, you know, so who's causing, who's caused this problem, none of us here.
State hasn't exactly given us clear guidelines on what to do.
And, and how you can take something over and have a complete, total lack of direction on everything is, uh, yeah.
Well, it's par for the course with the state.
Well, we talk to that whole list, and see if they understand how that's gonna work. Do you feel the, it may be the CICS one that's taking over, or the care matches, correct? Yeah. Clear with the CICS, right, isn't that right, you guys will be part of CICS then, or part of that CICS region, I can call it?
No, they're called districts, um.
Right, but I mean, oh, right, so I mean, you're part of that whole big CICS one then, correct?
Yes. Yes, Bill.
Got different counties, and it's the one CICS has, but I believe that Russell was, would be the guy in charge of. Yeah, I, I, I think he's doing more than just the CICS, I remember.
Yeah, he'll have that and he'll also be in charge of disability and, uh,
Do you have to pay the salary, like, on to yourself now?
That's what I'm gonna say, whatever, we're gonna meet next Monday, it's very precise, to Russell, and then consult with Rachel, and then have just kind of a one triggerizer and a kind of a burn off, do it that way, what, and what do you think?
I'll have a meeting with Melissa, the head of the CEO of Care Connections, and, uh, and I can ask her if there's been any news since the last, as far as.
We're meeting, our last meeting for Care Connections, Bill, is next Monday as well.
We have one Monday.
Don't we have a Zoom on Monday?
It's one today.
I thought there was a Zoom on Monday too, to close things out.
Yeah, we'll follow it.
Do you think there's one today, Bill?
No, somebody's done all this, I saw an email on that.
I guess, I don't, I don't think there's one today, Bill, I think it's just next Monday. Unless you want to drive to Emmitsburg and find out.
Well, I'm just, I just should have skipped that.
Yeah, I, I don't have any emails for today, I think it's next Monday, we're meeting with Melissa.
Oh, today's what it normally would be.
Right, right.
Yeah, I just had that in my head.
Hey guys, um, would it be, would it be okay if I try to get a hold of Russell and get him in on a conference call with us right now, if we had questions to ask him? Would you, would the group mind if I try to do that?
I think if you can, that'd be good, but we do have a couple other things scheduled here, we've got, um, audited stuff at ten, I mean, and but, but we don't, we're not, we're not tied to it more. I mean.
I couldn't hear, did it work for Cassuth if we called soon?
If, if you call soon, yeah, we're, we're just gonna have some stuff coming up time-wise, but yeah, if we can go now, go ahead.
Let us train, I'm working really quick, if you could just hold us a second, okay?
Yep, we'll wait.
Thank you.
Okay.
The whole project, they, they, although we're not real sure how, although.
At first time, it was like, oh, okay, it's a bug repair. And they, and we planned, uh, to really watch that, you know, and nobody knew like, how it could be, you know. And nobody knew like about communities and how. Moving on.
Well, great, good man.
Good boy. Do, do we know if Todd's looked at this or?
I sent it to Todd, he doesn't have the.
Can you guys all hear us?
No.
Yes.
Because it was, we're here.
Okay.
We can.
We have Russell on the line and thank you, Russell, for taking some time with us this morning. Um, we're kind of, we're at the dinner room right now, we're trying to figure out billing to the state, of how we send billing to the state. Do we have any idea of how that works?
And I, I don't have any answer for that, Gary, I don't.
And that's where we're at too, is I guess we were hoping that somebody might have a little insight into that, so.
Do we?
Rumbling what that might look like, I guess.
No, I, I had a call from Betty Town in Wright County about the same thing with the mental health stuff. And my recommendation was to ask her, who would you have the best manly at ISA? I don't know if you know that, she's the, uh, general counsel for ISA and I know I've had conversations with her in the past and she's aware of how all the changes are happening. I don't know if she would have a better response, but we haven't, I haven't been told that she how the mental health advocate stuff is going to work.
So we completely have a 2018 with our surrounding counties, the mental health advocate by July 14th. How do we put that together if we don't know what, what we put in the agreement?
I don't have an answer for you on that. The, the only thing, I know that some counties, they already have the 2018 and I don't know if they, what word is into it on how they're going to move forward. I think that, uh, Harden County has the 2018 for a mental health advocate or multiple for a lot of counties around their area. I know if they cover Franklin, Story, Marshall. I'm trying to think of who would have if Humboldt County has the 2018 that covers Webster, Wright and, uh, Humboldt, maybe Pocahontas. I'm trying to think of who else I would know that has one for you. But I, I think that's kind of where I'm at on that.
According to Melissa, for our CEO, last Friday, they just sent an email out that has all the information where everything is supposed to go to and you just send it to the state and how they're just going to take care of it or something like that. I haven't had time to read the email yet, she has, she worked on the, uh, just the name Friday. So it's not like they're waiting for the.
I have an agreement that's.
Yeah, not with, no, the last minute would be next Monday.
Yes.
Well, you have your Harden County.
Add, thank you that you found, or you have, you have.
I, I got the email, I just forwarded it to the, uh, Carla and the two supervisors here. Uh, I can forward it to you guys too.
Forward now, I'll add it forward to all these days.
I, I would have it, I just, I don't, I haven't seen it in my email, but if they send it out, I would have it.
Right, yeah, Melissa hasn't sent it out. She just sent it to me. She hasn't sent it to the rest of the board yet, so.
What issue?
The state, I would assume. Uh. Iowa, we just, it's so brighter, planning up to twenty, twenty twenty five.
Okay, I guess.
IowaPCA.org.
I guess for the rest of the group, Russell is, Russell is on the road and I, we probably shouldn't take as much of his time as he's on the road. So he's kind of answered our question as hard as we need, so if we don't have anything more for him, we should probably let him get back to what he's doing here. Um, Russell, uh, a lot of thanks for taking a couple minutes here with us this morning. And, uh, we'll let you get back to what you're doing here this morning.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't have more information for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Okay.
Bill, do you have info in that email? Is that what you're saying?
We're reading it right now.
Do you want to forward that to me and I'll read with you and share it with our board quick?
This is Kathy, I'll.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You say the cards before the horse, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, yeah, because like in our budget, we don't have anything in our budget to cover, cover those.
Of course, neither do we.
Well, we were prepared over here, so way to go, guys.
We can take the credit, that was because of Melissa. It was because of Melissa that we budgeted it.
I'll second that, boy.
Yeah.
What was that?
Reimbursing.
Oh, they're saying that we can.
That was quite a real old job.
Yeah, nice try. Yeah, I mean, if we don't, if we don't have anything for today, I don't know, do we? Yeah.
We, we all need to go through this email.
Can we get back on it? Sunday, Monday, you down here at the hotel?
Yeah, we have a, we're crazy, a Monday, I have a ten o'clock or fifteen minutes, but we could do like eleven thirty or eleven forty-five.
Let's see. Care Connections is one thirty on Mondays.
Yeah. So that works, do you, do you do eleven thirty or twelve after the, after the stuff? Eleven forty-five, do you agree on this? Okay, let's do eleven forty-five on Monday, okay?
We're, we're trying to check schedules here real quick.
Okay. Eleven forty-five on Monday.
I hope it'll make that. You will. As long as it's three, it was can. That's fine. Sounds like I think we can probably make that work. We're not a hundred percent sure, but it's looking okay if we do twelve forty-five on Monday. Eleven forty-five. Eleven forty-five, sorry. Does that work for everybody over there?
Well, that's not, that's not the person calling out on, uh, over the flag.
Bill, are you guys good with eleven forty-five?
Yeah. We'll make it work.
Okay. Hancock, worth?
Worth is it, huh?
Yep, one point five.
Okay.
I, I will send you guys our vote immediately for you to just to call in or log into that one, is that okay?
That'll work, yeah, that'll work. Okay.
Okay, and you have a say, say a little bit of that, too. Rachel's looking at the other ones that Russell had, that said that have them, so then I'll just have her talk to Kelsey, to Carla, perfect.
Yeah, I called, while we were on the phone, I called Lance Grant with Harden County and he did not know of anything off the top of his head, but he was going to check with another, one of their supervisors and see if they had anything, so I'm trying to get info from Harden.
Okay.
All right, are we good on that then for today?
Yes, so hopefully, everything will work out for me.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks, and I'll talk to you guys later. Okay, perfect. See you, guys. Okay, well. We can, Elizabeth's here, I guess, um, Doug, is it all right if we come back to you again, uh, or?
Or help?
Yeah, if, if that's all right. Okay, Elizabeth, let's do the audit now and we'll, we'll get that done right here.
Are you all?
You can sit there, it's fine, yeah.
Say that seems normal.
That's a comfier chair.
All right, so we're going to go through the audit for the fiscal year end of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So we'll go ahead and hit the highlights like we normally do. If anybody has questions, just go ahead and let me know. Um, and we'll hit the high points. So if you all have your audit books, we're going to go ahead and start on page two, which is Gardner and Company Letterhead. And it's independent audit report. And, you know, just as a refresher, the purpose of the audit is to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. The audit does not have anything to do with finding fraud or errors or irregularities. It's not designed to do that. The audit is designed to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. So the audit is based on tests and samples. We don't look at every single transaction that hits the county during the fiscal year. And then we go ahead and offer our opinion, uh, based on the results of our test work. So, uh, for the fiscal year end of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is what you want to hear. Means we believe that the financial statements are fairly presented. Now, during the course of the audit, we did find some material adjustments that required to be, um, adjusted through adjusting journal entries. Those entries were made by the county so that the transactions were properly included in those financial statements. And we'll talk about those again once we get to the back of the report with the schedule of findings. So, um, again, based on tests and samples, we do do a risk assessment. Um, we have our, uh, department heads and our digital officials fill out internal control questionnaires that help us determine what internal controls are in place, um, to assess the risk and then go ahead and design the audit base then on the results of that risk assessment. So ultimately, these financial statements are the responsibility of Cassoue County, um, and we just go ahead and offer opinion on them. So again, this letter goes ahead and outlines that, it outlines what our responsibilities are as the audit firm. Uh, and then goes ahead and talks about the required supplementary information and the supplementary information that is included as part of this annual audit report. So, uh, management's discussion and analysis then starts on page five. Uh, this goes ahead and gives the financial highlights for the year. It also talks about how to use and what's included in this annual report. And the county actually presents three separate sets of financial statements. We budget on the cash basis, so we have a budget to actual cash comparison. The county is required to submit the GAAP report to the Department of Management, which captures that sixty day accrual period. So it, it contains your accounts receivable, your accounts payable, secondary roads, inventory, that type of thing. And then the county is also required to present a full accrual financial statement, which is most like what you would see in the, in the public sector. And then we also have the reconciliations on how you get from one to the other for the financial statement. So this management's discussion and analysis goes ahead and, and explains that and details that out. Um, as you flip through it, there's also some comparative financial statements, uh, presenting both fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-three. Um, it's also an opportunity for the county to talk about the budget, what happened with the budget during fiscal twenty-four. Um, how many times was it amended and why did you amend it? It also gives the county a chance to talk about the subsequent year and the budget process, uh, looking forward into fiscal twenty-five for this particular, uh, audit report. So the actual financial statements then start on page twelve. And exhibit A and exhibit B are the countywide full accrual financial statements. So these financial statements present all of your capital assets, all of your long-term liabilities, which, you know, luckily Cassoue County has not had to issue debt. So really, the only long-term liabilities you're presenting are the net pension liability, OPEB liability, drainage warrants. Um, and then on the business type activities side, we have the, um, landfill post closure care costs. So, um, again, exhibit A, statement of net position is your balance sheet. Exhibit B, which is on page fourteen and fifteen, is your statement of activities, which is comparable to the income statement that you would see in the private sector. And on page fifteen, you can see that Cassoue County had a net increase in the net position of about five point six million dollars for this fiscal year. A large chunk of that, about four point six million, is attributable to the dollars that went through your farmer market account down at the DOT. So there was four point six million dollars worth of infrastructure and an infrastructure process that got added to your financial statements in your net position, um, that went through the account down there. Also, we had about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, that was contributed through the paving of the parking lot out at the major center. So that was contributed, so we recognize that as contributed capital, so, um, that's presented as well. And again, uh, Cassoue County continues to spend the American Rescue Plan act dollars this year. So we had a significant amount spent again during fiscal twenty-four, which triggered additional procedures that we'll get to after we get through the audit report. So again, exhibit A and exhibit B, those are your full accrual financial statements countywide, most like what you're going to see in the private sector. So then if you turn the page, uh, we have exhibit C and exhibit E, those are going to be your modified accrual. This is mirroring, mirroring the GAAP report that gets submitted to the Department of Management. Uh, we present general, rural services, secondary roads and drainage as your major funds. The rest of the governmental funds are aggregated and presented in that non-major column. And the detail for those non-major funds are presented in the back of this report as schedules one and schedules two, so you can see the detail for those smaller funds. But again, balance sheet and statement of changes are presented for those major governmental funds. Um, and then exhibit D and exhibit F are the reconciliation statements. So that shows the steps that were taken to get from a modified accrual financial statement to the full accrual financial statement. So you can see how the adjustments were made to get from one to the other. On exhibit G, actually G, H and I, we have your proprietary funds. We present the landfill transfer station as enterprise fund and then your health insurance as your internal service fund. So we have a balance sheet, a statement of changes and also a cash flow, uh, for your proprietary funds. Exhibit J and exhibit K are your custodial funds. Cassoue County acts as a fiduciary agent for several funds, including your assessor. You've got some trustee drainage, you have your corporations, your schools, your townships, where you're collecting those tax dollars and remitting them to the entities. So exhibit J shows the balance sheet snapshot of where everything was at June thirtieth. Exhibit K shows the statement of changes and what went through those funds during. Exhibit K shows the statement of changes and what went through those funds during the fiscal year. And again, the detail for this is in Schedules Three and Schedules Four in the back of the book. So then we start with the notes to the financial statements on page thirty-one. And I'm gonna skip over all of them unless someone has a specific question. You know, contained in the notes, a lot of accounting vocabulary and terminology, a lot of definitions, a lot more explanation on the cash basis, the modified accrual, and the full accrual basis of accounting. There's also information that's provided by the actuaries for your GASB sixty-eight pension disclosures. IFRS has an actuary that calculates that number and the State Auditor's Office then goes ahead and audits those amounts. And the actuary then provides several pages of information to be included in each of the counties, cities, each, you know, participating entity's financial statements. Same with your other post-employment benefits. You know, Cassuth County has an actuary that calculates that information every year and then provides the required information to be included in the audit report. We also talk about your insurance. We talk about your health insurance. Again, that's all included in those notes for financial statements. So the next place I wanna stop then is on page sixty. And this is a budgetary comparison schedule for the receipts and dispersments of your governmental funds. So this is on a cash basis because the county budgets on the cash basis were required to include this information. We have the cash basis receipts for all the governmental funds, cash basis dispersments for all governmental funds, and then the changes in the balance. The column that's titled less funds not required to be budgeted is your drainage. So that's the cash in and cash out of your drainage fund during this fiscal year. And that gets us to the net. Then we present the original budgeted amounts. And then we also present your final budgeted amounts after your final budget amendment for the year. And then we present the final net variance and then do analytical procedures on that. And for this year, there are some significant variances that were explained. So there aren't any red flags there. It's just projects never progress the way you think they're going to. You might order a piece of equipment, but it might not come in, so you can't pay for it until it comes in. You know, that was the normal with grants. You know, you might be expecting to receive a grant from the state of Iowa, but you know, with their process and everything you have to go through, it might not be received when you think it's going to. So you might have done a budget amendment to, you know, account for that, but it might not be received by the county when you expect it to. Following that, then, we have some more required supplementary information, talking about the cash and the modified accrual basis. Other supplementary information that's required for your Iowa public employees retirement system. We're required to present ten years of your proportionate share. That's on page sixty-three and sixty-four. We're also required to present ten years of the county contributions to IFRS. Some more actuarial information is presented on page sixty-seven, page sixty-eight, sixty-nine. More required supplementary information about your other post-employment benefits liability that's again calculated by the actuary and then provided to less orientation in this report. Then on page seventy-one, we start with the combined balance sheet for the non-majors. So those funds that are aggregated and presented as non-major in the front of the book, this is their chance to shine and have their independent presentation. The EMS levy is the new fund for the year. So you know, when you're doing some comparisons between fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-three, you know, that is the bulk of the change there is the establishment of that EMS levy fund. So that's presented here as well. The statement of changes then on page seventy-three and seventy-four show the activity in that fund for the fiscal year. And so then if we continue back, Schedule Three and Four, those are your custodial funds that again are aggregated, presented in the front as Exhibit J and Exhibit K. On page eighty-three and eighty-four, we have another ten-year comparison schedule, the revenues by source and expenditures by function for the last ten years for the governmental fund. And that brings us to page eighty-five, which is independent auditor report on internal control and on compliance. And in addition to opining on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented, we also do some internal control work and we also do some Code of Iowa compliance test work. So the State Auditor's Office, which is our oversight, provides us with a compliance guide every year. And they are having us test for Cassuth County's compliance with the Code of Iowa in specific areas. So there are some things that we are required to look at every year. There are some things that are every other, every three, every five years. Then there's some things that they throw in just to spice it up for fun, to see if we're on our toes. Again, this is based on tests and samples. We don't test every single transaction that might have had an impact on the findings. And our findings are based on the results of our test work. So if there's something you have to do once a month and you've done it perfectly eleven times and you mess it up once, and if that happens to be the one that we pick for test work, it triggers a finding. So that's how that works. Okay, so then that leads us into the schedule of findings, which starts on page eighty-seven. And the first one we have is segregation duties, which is an old friend. It's in every single audit report that we issue. It's just that the county does not have enough people in each office to entirely segregate the custody and the record keeping. So it's entirely possible that one person would go ahead and handle a transaction from inception to completion. So again, we recommend cross-training, making sure that, you know, the duties are getting done if somebody has to be gone so that somebody else knows that job, knows what to expect. And we, you know, we recommend that you swap every once in a while. You know, don't wait for somebody to have to be gone. If you can go ahead and switch it up and have somebody else perform those duties, absolutely do it. We also recommend that you keep an eye on the State Auditor's Office website because when they have a fraud investigation or misappropriations investigation, they're very detailed in those reports. And so if you're monitoring those reports, it's good information to read through how that fraud or that, you know, misappropriation was perpetrated. And then you can play the devil's advocate and could this happen here? And then make any adjustments that you see necessary based on what they're finding in their work. But again, you know, you do have internal controls in place. The board is active in the disbursement process. You're looking at the claims. You know, I recommend you look at the claims, not just a listing. Go through them, especially employee reimbursements, especially credit cards. You know, just make sure that the proper documentation is there. The Auditor's Office does a really good job going through. But again, it's the supervisors that are approving those claims. So you know, the Auditor's Office is really good about flagging them if something doesn't look right. But ultimately, you know, the supervisor should go ahead and approve those dispersments. So stay involved in that process. Again, with the Treasurer's Office and the bank reconciliation process and balancing, you know, they've got their internal controls in place there as well. So you know, you're doing what you can. Just keep on top of it. Cross-training is huge. And yeah, read those audit reports as they show up on the State Auditor's Office website. So the next finding we have is in regards to preparation of full disclosure financial statements. Cassuth County does not have a CPA on staff to prepare the GAAP report or to prepare the full accrual financial statements. So we do assist with that process. And because we're involved with that, I'm required to have a finding to go ahead and address that. Now ultimately, you know, Tammy has to take responsibility as the county auditor. She's responsible for any proposed adjusting journal entries between her and Nick. They make the decisions on those adjusting journal entries. And then ultimately, once we take all your information and pull it together, she ultimately has to approve that draft of the financial statements and take responsibility for it. But because we assist with that process, we're required to have this finding in the report. The next finding we have on page eighty-eight is in regards to financial reporting. During the course of the audit, we did identify material amounts of accounts receivable, deferred inflows of resources, and capital assets and infrastructure construction in progress that hadn't been properly reported in the county's financial statements. Now, a large portion of that is the opioid settlement. During fiscal twenty-four, they did settle Walmart, Walgreens, CVS. You know, there's a whole handful of them that were settled. That information became available on the State Auditor's Office website. They do have a spreadsheet set up for each of those settlements because you're gonna be receiving that over seventeen years. So they have set up spreadsheets to go ahead and track that. So what we did is we went together and pulled together a whole big spreadsheet and provided that to Tammy's office so they can track that as it comes in now, so they'll have that information. Now, the tricky part is the actual payments aren't matching what the State Auditor's Office spreadsheets say they should be. So I guess our, the spreadsheets that they gave us are a good start and then, you know, you have to follow up as you receive those payments. Some of them are graded because those, I believe those funds are earning interest and so ultimately, they're paying that interest out as well. But again, that spreadsheet will be a good start. So if you can keep that up, then that will resolve this finding. And then with the capital assets, capital assets continue to be a difficult process, especially with solutions. The Solutions program is not necessarily the best. It's not my favorite capital asset software. And there was a glitch when it rolled over from fiscal twenty-three to twenty-four. The accumulated depreciation should match when you roll it forward and it didn't. And so Tammy and Brittany fought with that. And that is actually one of the reasons for the delay in the audit process too, is because they were trying to work through that snag with the rollover process. So you know, just making sure that capital assets are being entered properly, making sure the software's working properly, getting timely help with that software if need be. So but I know with solutions, the help hasn't necessarily been timely throughout this past year. And you're not the only county that has been dealing with that this year as well. Okay, so then that gets us into the Code of Iowa statutory reporting portion of the report. And that starts on page eighty-nine. The first one is with the budget. Disbursements during the year did not exceed the amounts budgeted, but we did have a couple of departments that had exceeded the amounts appropriated. And also, the budget had not been properly appropriated by department by resolution before any dispersments were made in accordance with the code. So the code does require that that budget has to be appropriated by resolution prior to any dispersments being made. And for this fiscal year, dispersments were made July third and July eleventh, and the resolution wasn't approved until July twelfth. So those dispersments had hit prior to. So my recommendation is always to make those appropriations resolutions the last meeting in June. So that way, if you do have something that comes up where you have to issue a handwritten warrant, one of those things that you can do out of session, if you have that appropriations resolution done that last, you know, meeting in June, you're good to go if that happens. So hopefully that will be resolved in the future. And also, the departments need to make sure they're monitoring their budget every month and letting Tammy know if they need to have either an appropriations adjustment or to have a budget amendment done. So they're the ones that know what their expenditures are. They're, you know, in the middle of it. So they're the ones that need to be communicating with the Auditor's Office if they do need an adjustment. So. The questionable expenditures comment. During the course of the audit, we did not identify any expenditures for which there was not proper public purpose documented. Now, that means, doesn't mean that there weren't any. It just means, again, our audit is based on tests and samples. So the dispersments that we chose for our sampling and for our test work, everything appeared to have a proper public purpose to go with it. All right, on page ninety. The Code of Iowa identifies six thousand dollars as the threshold for potential conflict of interest if the county is doing business with related parties. During the fiscal year, we did note transactions with related parties, as noted here. There was one that was over that six thousand dollar threshold, but the related party did not participate in the acquisition of the services. And that is one of the loopholes that makes this okay. You know, the others are going out for competitive bidding or competitive quotes. And again, you know, everything was met as it should be. And so this becomes just a transparency disclosure and there's no finding associated with it. So then the next statutory finding is on page ninety-one in regards to sheriff's separately maintained account. And again, this has been in this audit report for as long as I can remember. And it's in regards to the commissary profit fund that's maintained by the sheriff's office. They don't wanna turn that over. The profits really should be going through the county and they should be part of the budget process. The treasurer should be maintaining those funds. Claims for non-resale items should really be going through the claims process and the disbursement process. Instead, they're maintaining that checking account there and they're purchasing those non-resale items through that checking account. So this will remain a finding. For the tax increment financing, the reconciliations are being prepared. It was noted though that the amount of tip that was gonna be apportioned during the current fiscal year wasn't correct on the county reconciliation. So just making sure that the correct amounts are on all those reconciliations. That's really important as you get towards the end of one, to make sure that the county has not paid out more than what has been certified as an obligation. So just verifying those amounts. And with that, we have a comment about the annual urban renewal report. And the revenues, expenditures, ending balances reported on that should match exactly what's on the county's general ledger. So tip is confusing. So you know, I recommend just having somebody look at those before they get certified. I know the annual, or the annual urban renewal report goes through the Board of Supervisors to be approved every fall. So you know, just pull that general ledger and just verify those amounts and double-check because again, the reporting for the tip is very complicated and it's really easy to get things mixed up and confused. So and then, you know, you know what that number should be when you looked at it so long, but that's the number you see. Whether or not that's the number that's printed on the form. So just having a second set of eyes, just to go through and double-check that, fresh eyes. You know, that's my recommendation with both the TIF reconciliations and the annual urban renewal report because again, it's complicated. So just making sure that we have those numbers double-checked. On page ninety-two, we have a financial assurance finding about the transfer station, which Doug probably already has. I'm gonna need, transfer station? Yep. Okay, so we're good to go there. And then also then we had a finding about financial position. The drainage districts and the Buffalo Township Urban Renewal had deficit balances. Now, with the drainage is because of your stamp warrants. You have a significant amount of stamp warrants out there, so that triggers it to go negative. With the Buffalo Township Urban Renewal, you had some inter-fund loans. And recording those loans is what causes that fund to go negative. So as those loans get paid off, that fund will come back into the positive. And then on page ninety-three, the last statutory finding we had is in regards to transfers. And the Code of Iowa requires all the transfers to be approved in the board minutes. And there were several drainage transfers that happened throughout the year that had not been acknowledged in the minutes. So just making sure that the minutes are showing the record of that, so that way they're going through that proper approval process as well. All right, any questions on that piece of it? Okay. Cassuth County spent a lot of federal money this last year. Most of it was American Rescue Plan Act. The threshold for having to have a single audit is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures during the fiscal year, which you guys worth that seven hundred, I think seven hundred and two thousand in just American Rescue Plan. But you add that to the rest of your federal dollars, it got you over that threshold. But the Office of Management and Budget implemented a change with that. So if it's because of the American Rescue Plan Act that you're over that threshold, you're able to have an alternative compliance examination engagement instead of the full-blown single audit. So because you guys were in that position, that's what we did. We went ahead and we did the agreed-upon procedures engagement for looking at those American Rescue Plan Act expenditures. So it was a separate engagement, a separate report that was issued. And then we are going ahead and we have that, I sent that to you this morning. Tammy, we'll have to do a filing with the U.S. Department of Treasury, recording that you had those procedures performed and we do believe that you're in compliance. So we had to go ahead and test the compliance to make sure that the expenditures were for, you know, a compliant project and everything was properly approved, which everything went through the Board of Supervisors, either motion form, claim form, resolution form. All the documentation was there. All the reporting is happening. So we had to issue an independent accounts report on that, which she will submit to the U.S. Department of Treasury. And that will complete that for the fiscal year. Questions, concerns? I know that's a lot of information.
I just had a question. If any of our findings are a repeat, I know the commissary, of course, one is a repeat always.
Segregation of duties is financial reporting is preparation of financial statements is the budget. I believe we had a, I think that's a modification. I don't believe it's the exact verbiage from last year, but I believe there was a budget finding last year. The annual urban renewal report is. Yeah, financial position, that one has been going on a couple of years. But again, you know, you're gonna have that with the drainage and the amount of stamp warrants that you have out there. Until you're getting those assessments in to collect that, you're gonna have that situation. And the same with the inter-fund loan. You know, that's gonna be out there until the TIF repays that particular loan. So yeah, there were several repeats.
But some of these are in our control and we can change them forward, so they shouldn't be in there again.
Right. Yep. Yeah, the budget one would be, you know, is under your control. You know, it'd be good bits to share, your own commissary. Which, you know, again, that one I think has been in here as long as I can remember. But yeah, with the TIF and the annual urban renewal, you know, I think we get a second set of eyes looking at that. You know, I think that one's gonna be resolved. So and then the transfers, with, you know, making sure that those all go through the board.
And we did our appropriation resolution today already.
Yep, so you're good to go then. So that one will be okay for the next fiscal year. So you know, we did have a couple other, you know, smaller, non-report findings. We always have that. We discuss those, you know, with the respective people when we're here for the audit. You know, the one this year that kinda stands out is opioid settlement funds weren't earning interest. And you know, Nick has already calculated and he was gonna have a transfer to correct that. You know, that's the one that kinda stood out to me, I guess, as being significant. The rest of them are, you know, of all the credit cards we test. The rest of them are, you know, of all the credit cards we test, I think there was two that maybe didn't have a detailed receipt attached, wasn't a material dollar amount, so again, wasn't worth putting in the report, but again, made the auditor's office aware to make sure that all the details there. With the opioid settlement, those funds are required to earn interest, and, you know, that interest is supposed to be spent on the same purposes that those opioid settlement funds are, so Nick went back and calculated that interest and was gonna make a corrective transfer, and then he's calculating that separately then as time moves on, because again, that's gonna be with us for the next sixteen or seventeen years, so. Other questions or concerns? Well, thank you for letting me come and talk you through it. All right.
I have to give a question.
Got letters for me.
Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, you too.
I'm thinking when Tammy gets back, we can finish up Doug's items, and then we can take a short break and come back and do drainage, so we can get some of that out of the way before lunch.
Yeah.
If that works, okay.
Yep, we got our discussion on the board.
Right, we can do that anytime, but yeah. Mainly, I'm hoping to get through the assessment before lunch, and then if we can, I don't know, we'll see.
We'll see.
I guess if we don't, we don't.
I'd be pushing it, but I mean, we got to throw them in our shoulders, but, I mean, it's hard to get through, and you just, you know, see them today, which I understand why it's today, but I'm just saying, that's kind of hard to.
No, I know, I know.
Absorb.
I just think in structure, they.
And we have one page the last time, and now we've got a lot.
Well, all of the columns that don't, that don't, well, all the columns that are green were things that have been added in the last three weeks, all the columns that don't have formulas on the right side and stuff, all the ones that were updated last night by me. And a lot of those have where the waivers are, so we can come to.
Okay, so what do you mean you updated them?
I went through the report of Sonnen, fifty-three pages long, plugged in.
Where'd you get them?
From Solutions. All of them by each one, I mean, let's got them all there, and then put that into spreadsheet, so that's where it all focuses on. But a lot of these were included on the original, the original numbers, but there's a lot of ones that have been added, and even some intro in those ones that are clear on the fund numbers, there was info that was changed from the draft we had last looked at as before. So, there's been a lot of updates over the last couple of weeks, and has.
I wonder if I got the ruler in there.
It would be in the board folder, if you click on those row, and so you can highlight all the way across. I think it's easier to look at and view than print and copy.
It's easier to look at and copy myself, but.
I just use a computer to do the ruler side of things.
It's locked for editing.
You wouldn't edit yourself, but.
I'm sorry, I'm aware, and this is still not. Did we finish with Doug?
No, we're using the back of Doug, so.
If you're ready.
Yep.
Okay, Doug, we'll come back to you then now.
Okay.
And we've got, let's see, we need to approve the Iowa DOT federal aid agreement?
Yes. We have activated and started development on plans for, it would be the Bancroft Forest City Road resurfacing project, and we should do that next year, so we just need a motion to approve the federal aid agreement. I don't know if there's just a problem for everyone.
Okay. I got my.
Again, our location, Bancroft Forest City Road, it would be from A-42 from Highway 169 East to P-64, standard Iowa DOT federal aid agreement, so this would be where Cassuth County agrees to receiving the federal funds to complete it. The federal funds will be $1.3 million, and remaining will be coming out of Cassuth County's farming market funds for this project.
What's the estimated total progress?
I think it's $2.3 million is what we have, but in our five-year program, estimated.
Okay. You made a motion?
Okay, motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
To approve, second by Wacter. Any discussion on approval? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carried. We had a discussion decision to amend Cassuth County's Iowa DOT fiscal year 2026 secondary road construction program.
Yes, last week, we spoke a little bit about the two bridges that ended up qualifying for a federal grant. One of them is right east of Ledyard, that goes over the outlet of the, outlet of the Union Slough, and the other one is on P-16, right north of A-42, that goes over the east fork of the Des Moines River. One of the requirements is that that needs to be in the statewide improvement project, and this resolution will allow that to be, to take place. So, what it says is that the, there's a grant, the grant requires that the projects be in the STIP, and these are being put into fiscal year 2028 program. And one of them, I actually had to move from fiscal year 29 to fiscal year 28, and they actually, the project numbers, we were planning to use federal money to replace those, the project numbers, it's a grant now instead of a part of the block grant that the state receives, so the project numbers changed as well. So, this is more of a, in order to stay on pace with the grant that is happening.
Okay, this is resolution number zero-six dash twenty-four dash twenty-five dash oh-three. We'll need a motion to approve. Okay, motion by Haas.
Second.
Second by Garmen. Discussion on the resolution. If not, roll call vote.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmen?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Wacter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes. Motion carried.
There is no construction in the road right away, so go ahead and get these, need both Tammy and Hugh Carter, please, on that. And that is that resolution, and then these are, you can have one of those, Tammy, remind me, too, to email it to you.
Okay.
And this is the federal aid agreement. Chair right there, county auditor right to the left, please. And I made two copies of that, I'll put both of them in my file if anybody needs them, one I'll send back to the department. All right, thank you.
Thank you. If no right of way, then anything for discussion today?
I gotta kind of get straightened up here quick.
Yeah, you're good.
Finding my notes. All right. The pavement, the resurfacing projects, Matthew is doing that, we are, they are surfacing P-30 right now, and resurfacing B-55. So, they, we've got a lot of construction with the resurfacing projects, the three resurfacing projects. Godverson Smith, north of Sexton with the bridge project, they have driven the south pier pile, preparing to pour concrete for a cap on that, and then also preparing to drive the north pier pile, so they're busy up there. Slurry leveling is winding down, they are, I believe they are south of Bancroft, between A-42 and B-14, and they're also starting to work on, it would be P-30, south of Sway City and the low rock, they're starting to get some micro-surfacing there. We are advertising for engineer's office, it's a technician or an aide, just so the board knows, I have three levels of technicians and three levels of aide. A technician would be, if there's an applicant, an entry level with an AAS degree, they would not have necessarily any Iowa DOT key certifications, a project manager, I guess first, the technician one is, what I say is that the wage is forty to fifty percent of the county engineer's salary. Technician two, which would be a project manager, they would be in charge of projects, that salary is fifty to sixty percent. Technician three, which would be a licensed land surveyor, would be fifty-five to seventy percent of the engineer's wage. Engineering aides, if we just hired somebody with a high school degree and start doing a high school diploma, and we start training them ourselves, we have anywhere from $22 per hour to $24 per hour. If they start getting some certificates, we pay them by the hour, again, twenty-four to twenty-six, and if we would have somebody that's a survey party chief, we use forty-five to fifty-three percent of the engineer's salary for those. So, waiting to see who applies, but depending on qualifications, that would be what we're talking about. And then we're also advertising for an operator, the Algoa Shop, we had an operator that announced that he was going to be retired. We continue to monitor to the west of Sway City, where there's a lot of garbage appliances, equipment in the road right away, there has been some activity on there, it's not moving as fast as what I would like. But we continue to monitor that, hopefully they'll continue to agree with that. Next week, now that we have an audit, I'll be completing the post-closure assurance for the Iowa Department of Natural Resources on the landfill, presenting that to the board supervisors. Self-insurance, once the fiscal year ends, which will be the thirtieth of June, we will start getting reports that are required, generated, and so we can review those and make sure that everything is working out all right with that. And then I continue to work with Cory, working with Zoda, together, we do have a variance, and I think there's going to be a special use permit coming up, but I'm working with Cory to make sure that he knows how I used to do that work.
Any questions for Doug? Thanks, Doug.
You bet. Thank you.
Have a good day. You guys wanna, wanna break before the drainage?
Ten minutes.
Okay, all right, we'll take ten minutes, and then we'll come back at eleven o'clock for drainage.
Oh, yeah. So they.
They're silent.
And then.
And it was like, Dave, he does the same thing, you know, he's, he's there, he doesn't mind.
Yeah.
So, not helping.
So, Bruce, hey, we'll figure it out, like, it's tricky there.
Oh, I don't understand.
Because.
But, yeah, that's true.
Trap, trouble is, I was there all the time.
You got them, maybe.
They don't, they don't.
I, some.
You know, the, the, hi, some block.
Yeah, there was a lot of work that's gone into that. And I would, I mean, it's in a relatively decent place, but I'd rather say it's.
Yeah, you're like two, fuck, he'll go in the sundown, there's their capital. Yeah. Hello. Maybe Florida, maybe the war, like, last Saturday, it was, Saturday morning. Okay. And that's the only one, I treat, a couple of months, we're also on those nerves, probably. Yeah, I, I thought the women, I saw it. Yeah, I thought, well, I didn't saw it. There's no more ones, I know, a long one, I don't even see it, once, and then I got there, it was gone. But, of course, it would have been a guy only laying there, they wouldn't do that. So, yeah, it'd be a little bit longer there, so. It should be, a good hatch. I don't, I don't, it wasn't starting to start hatch.
Oh. Next two weeks, it'll probably start some.
Yes, okay. We just, we pass, it names it for it.
See, not ten to be hit it.
It's pretty.
Ashes, and then they get, lose it.
Yes, so. There, I, so, that's what we get to do there. But, I, this is what I, we, 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 you know, so, so, I, which, kind of, wonder, like, a whole bit.
You're supposed to be watching, unless you are there. Or, that, you think, the video department, yeah, which actually, you know. Yeah, I guess that's, the department head would sign off on it, like, if it's a board number, we owe it ourselves, but it, either the department head that would sign off, or if it's wrong, it's really.
Yes.
Let me decide it's wrong.
We're a little, I would, I would, I would think, I would think, I mean, I don't want to reinvent the wheel here, but. You actually, it's, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't, I think it was a meeting, one, it should be a good point of that, we should, right, to a point, but, there.
I mean, to some degree, it probably depends on what it involves. If. Trying to think of an example. I guess, like, there's, there would have been things where I would have been down there for County Day at the Capitol, and that, that's a little part where it's been, it's over at Sheridan West of mine, so then if you go to the Capitol, and you're driving across town, and I mean, that's all business use, but I mean, at the end of the day, you're going to drive a mile or two to go get food.
Mm, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, it's pretty minor, and, yeah, I guess. Okay. Tracking the difference, and that would probably shift it all. Not worth the trouble. I mean, if I,
Those were the past years.
For, for me personally, if I left home and I reset my trip, and I, and everything I did down there was work-related. I mean, I would just use the number that's on my trip at the end, otherwise, there's times that I'm like, oh, I forgot to reset my trip or whatever, so I'd use Google Maps and get close, I mean. I always forget to look when I get home. Well, I've done that too, I mean, there's times that I reset it and I forgot to look or whatever, but, I guess, as long as it's the best intention of being close, and I don't know, what else to do? If. If there's a couple miles more, a couple miles less, I'd improve it, and whether it's me or anybody else, I don't know. Did you, difficult?
Yeah, I've seen them, I've seen them, uh, who, who support you, or, or, too. I've never seen them on.
Yeah, you could, yeah, my, my, because we had some spots. Yeah, I feel it's cool, but I'm not actually uncomfortable yet.
Got a little bit of a, I'm trying to know, this place, yeah. Sometimes it's cold, and sometimes it's not.
Well, compared to the, the.
Yeah.
Week. Weekend we had last. Yeah.
Yeah, trust me, I'd rather be cold every day than hot.
When every air conditioner was matching style, probably, unless you're.
Oh, yeah. Artists just keep up, and usually does a pretty good job of keeping up, but it did not keep up this time.
And I think this thing, I was just up, up.
He was up about seven degrees. It was just warm enough. It is, we've had an issue with it earlier in the year, and I just wonder if it's not a hundred percent remedy quite yet, it was low on for ya. Which is the first time it's been low on for ya, since we got that, which we had quite a year, so. So I just, yeah, so I wonder if there's just a little bit more to it.
Yeah, it'll be.
It's caught back up now, but it's only in the seventies.
Wow, outside air temp makes a big difference.
It does.
It's standing water. Something you're probably. Yeah, yeah, I thought it was, yeah, there's, we got, I got a couple spots to say, I have the time, I have the picture, to discuss that. Water exposing. Let's go, go, I'll see you. Yeah, you want it, I'll say, yeah, you want it, I'll, I'll, you said it, you know. Yeah, that last year, I think, I think through those, I, I love them, they're pretty good. I don't know. Last two, like, hours, J C seven, I think, I like it, so, I don't think I'm four or six. Yeah, it's, it's.
We're all back. Damn, he's excited, ready to roll. Okay. Are you, are you ready to, okay, all right. Um, okay, we are up to some drainage here, so, first thing to do is approving.
Do our repair requests, get them out of the way?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that next on the agenda, yeah. Okay, we'll do, approve drainage repair requests. Looks like tile's the only winner today. Couple of them.
Thank you. Yep, I got number forty-six D four five nineteen, uh, fixing collapsed tile in Greenwood, um, section thirteen. And number forty-seven is, um, sixty sub four, repaired collapsed tile for Bill Wallstead, which I think this is probably what he was talking about in the completion hearing, and by the map, it shows that they're off on the laterals, but I will need to get, I think I need to talk with Raisles to make sure they were not the manbill, to make sure they were not the connections to the main, because if there are connections to the main, that needs to be handled differently than just fixing spots, so, um, I'll double check on that one too, but, that's what I got.
Okay, we'll need a motion to let supervisors handle their requests. Some of them. Motion by Whacker, second by Stucker.
Carmen.
Sorry, sorry, second by Garmin. I looked at Amber and said, go. Uh, okay, any discussion on the motion? Now, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion carried. Okay, now we can go to twenty twenty-five Fall Drainage District Assessments.
In our folder, there's two. There's one from seven twenty-six a.m. and the one from seven fifty-two a.m., which ones, which one are we supposed to be looking at?
The, the one with the date that has, if you last, yesterday's date, but, um, that'd be the one that I put in there this morning, which has added figures for the waivers for quite a few different lines, so that has more information on it, which would be the second copy that was printed out this morning.
It's all the same, the detail, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, what we found yesterday, when we were finishing up stuff, was that some of the waivers were put in the different mains, um, when they did the, yeah, uh, reclassification, so the amount of waivers wouldn't show up, weren't showing up in the original drain, so it didn't give a complete picture of what was still outstanding in waivers.
And if you look at the bottom of the, well, almost the bottom of the Excel sheet, but the column O, where the waivers are due, there are some formulas I put in there, and it's got what it has in the sheet and has in the report, and then there's a difference, and it's a fourteen hundred dollar, uh, five location. Keep going, right there. It shows a fourteen hundred dollar difference, but some, there was a couple numbers that I think I skipped over 'cause I knew they were already inputted in, and we updated the report, that would have been, um, a couple weeks ago, so, there's a few that people have came in and paid off, and that's what that would represent, but in general, it's a very close picture of what we have coming through for waivers across the entire county.
Well, as you can see, we've added a lot of information since we've seen it last. Everything that's in green on the side are drains that were not listed last time you saw it, so, um, we have been busy.
Yeah.
Is there a way to, on these spreadsheets, granted, I know you don't know what pages are gonna be till you get it all complete, but to have the headers on every page?
Yes, so, um, on my, on the other one, that is in the public drive without the date, it does have the header on every page. Um, the one that, that Kyle worked on adding the USA ground, and that doesn't, but yes, from now on, they will have the header on every page.
Yeah, so, there is a couple that I put notes on where they've got, like, ten dollars here, and five dollars there, ninety dollars on one. There's different parcels that have five dollar assessment amounts that appear to have been waived, which I don't really know why, but, um, those are probably things that have just kind of floated around through the books for a while, and I guess I have no expectation of payment for any of those, so as a board, we probably should get those cleaned up and get them off our books at some point, so, they're not constantly reported, but, um, a lot of the things that were added, like big substance, were improvement projects, such as train seventy-five, sixty sub one, those were some big dollar figures. And those are projects that had happened relatively recently in the last couple of years, so.
What does it say improvement on any of these?
Um, the project type, like repair improvement, does not all fill in.
Okay.
But, that's where the type of project is in that category. I just know some of those, 'cause I was here for them. Sixty sub one was up in my district, um, seventy-five would have been in Rogers prior to reclassification, or redistricting, sorry, and then it's in mine now. But very top of seventy-five comes into your district, Amber, it's maybe forty, fifty acres, I don't know, but the majority of that one is in, is in Ramsey.
So, the ones that are highlighted, in yellow?
So, um, those are the ones that don't have the units listed, um, because they're either called something in the computer or they're in open ditch, we need to confirm to make sure that we have the right amount of units. So that's all that is, is that it's not calculating because the units running there.
Okay, there's one that isn't highlighted, that maybe you have it highlighted now, but it looks like it's.
Where did, where is that one, Amber?
Well, is it D D seventy-two or seventy-five, that's.
Oh, okay.
I guess that one, here, a little bit.
That is seventy-five.
Yeah, okay, I see it, thank you.
Yeah.
Can I say anything?
It's, doesn't have the units in it, so it's not calculating, and I must highlight it.
Oh. So I guess one of the, one of the big things with this, in comparison to previous years, where the Excel sheet had a, an amount to be assessed, um, that was presented, we do not have that, um, we have a column of amount needed, which would be the formula of the difference between cash balance, outstanding warrants, interest, the subtotal, and any incoming funds from waivers due, or FEMA, et cetera. Um, so those, that amount needed column shows positive or negative balance, depending on the drain's situation. Like I said, there's, say, D seventy, well, sixty sub, I'll use sixty sub one as an example, let me find what line that is.
Sound towards the bottom of the first page, third up from the bottom.
Yeah, so sixty sub one would start, like, line sixty-two-ish, um.
Yeah, there's stuff, but with different laterals, so.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's because it was an improvement project, it took a reclassification, each lateral gets billed their own assessments.
Right.
So, in, in the column, uh, sixty-one, line P, it's labeled FEMA funds, but I put a subtotal there of all those different laterals, so that it, you could see the amount needed is actually a negative, almost two thousand, so that one's on track, that one's good.
So, if you look on the first page, third from the bottom, where he has the, in the column that says FEMA funds due, the five twenty-nine, that's not FEMA funds, it's a total.
Yeah, and that's why I labeled the line right under it, I said, total project waivers, so, it's, I just tried to describe it and say that it's not, it's not FEMA funds there, it's total waivers. But, in general, I mean, if you look at that, the outstanding would be, or the subtotal is five twenty-seven, the total coming in would be five twenty-nine, so that one's basically perfectly on track. And those waivers accrue their own interest, so, as interest adds up over the years with those waivers, they will take care of themselves, because the initial assessment was sufficient to cover the bills at the time.
So the other ones underneath, like, D D sixty sub one main tile, where it just has waivers due and an amount of, what, what is that, what does that all mean?
So that's the assessment for the main tiles, the amount of waivers that were signed up was three hundred seventeen thousand.
Okay, so.
I don't know if that gets under the next page.
So nothing else?
Yeah, so that's, there's, there's a couple more, and.
Yeah.
The rest of those, so, all those are totaled up in that five twenty-nine dollar figure.
Oh, okay, they're all part of that.
Yeah, that's all included in that formula, so, oh, sixty-one to sixty-six is in that.
So when that money comes in, is it being divided out separately into those different funds? 'Cause we have it as, you know, one, total five twenty-nine, five seventeen, seventy-eight, but then they're separate, because I'm assuming it's reclassified, right? So, how is that money, how is that money being divided out?
I believe that money should be getting transferred back to, um, fund fifty-one, one three nine, where all those bills were originally paid from, um, to pay back those grants that were issued to complete the process of building that project. And I'm, I need, I got some more questions as far as how those were set up, or whatever, so I'm.
Well, when they're reclassified, aren't they your own funds?
They are, and they were levied that way, but the original payments that were made, so contract or entry, main owners for crop damage, publishing, all those project costs, those would have been. landowners for crop damage, publishing, all those project costs, those would have been paid under the old fund. And I'm not sure if that's the way they should have been done or not, but that's how it was set up. And it's clear that was how it was set up for several other projects as well. I mean, if you look back at the older assessment schedules, it shows different um fund numbers and then says transfer to um other funds, so yeah, I've.
Well, it just seems like that's probably not the way it should be.
I don't know.
I know we can't, I know we can't change it, but since it already happened, but I would think that if a bill was for a lateral, then the money that comes in for that lateral should cover that bill.
Yes, and I think I think that's the difficulty in these projects where there's improvements and you're doing a reclassification because there wasn't a schedule for each lateral before. So that's a new schedule that's being created. So when those bills were issued, they were put on the schedule that was available or the fund that was available. But until those new funds and schedules are created, I don't think it's possible to divvy out those bills. I I don't know, I got a I got several questions of my own in that category, but that's the best of my understanding.
So for instance, I mean, and I'm just making this up. So for instance, if there was money on DD four lateral two, and I'm I'm just saying that because it's right in front of me, and it was a FEMA project, it would uh that FEMA dollars just goes to DD four?
No, yes, that is reclassified.
Well, I'm just saying that as an example.
Pretend it wasn't.
Yeah.
You pretend it's just basic.
Yeah, it's just an example, it didn't really happen, I'm just I just said that.
DD four is probably a bad one to use as an example because it's huge and complex.
Well, just okay, DD, DD blah, blah, blah.
Six sixty sub one or those would be like I was just saying that would be one that yeah, if there was, if you look at the list of laterals, you got the main tile, you've got the Minnesota lateral, lot one, two, and three. If there was a repair on Minnesota lateral ten years ago, there would have only been one fund and it would have been sixty sub one. So it would have only had one account that it could have been paid from because that whole district was in one schedule at the time. And that was obviously before this project was done, but um.
Quick to answer your question Amber, that is something that we need to check out into how it should be done, what the rules are on that and um making sure that it's not in the category.
Yep.
Because that's.
I think it comes down to the timing of when the district is actually classified and when to create those funds and when the bills are paid. And I'm like I said, yeah, I got a lot of questions in that category too, but this is this is what we got for the situation right now, so that's the best way I can explain it. So I don't know if we want to go through things line by line and look at the amounts that are needed and the associated information, almost a dollar amount to assess or how we want to go through it up because there are a lot of different pieces.
So is the spreadsheet complete? Is what we're looking at complete and done and final, ready to say this is what we need for assessments?
As far as all the assessments that that we.
Are you asking about the outstanding versus the waivers that are coming in?
I'm just kind of looking at the calculated levy amount, you know. The calculated levy amount should be what we need to assess, correct?
Yeah, so we're kind of looking at the amount needed column. Um just in case it doesn't have that unit, so there's only what, three of them? But that's kind of the column we were looking at is the amount needed.
Just in case they would, but would that would the amount needed be the same as?
It should be the same, it should be the same, yes.
Do we have, okay, do we have a total column? So it will fit with different?
Number four.
Just all of them, so then you know.
My total assessment.
Yeah, total a total amount needed versus total calculated total levy.
To know that, oh, those those are the same, then that would tell you if they're the same.
It it won't, it won't be because of the few that have no units plugged in. So the with those columns or the formulas not complete on the calculated total, it it won't calculate a total at the bottom if you have a formula there.
But that is something that should be there, if that's what you're asking, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it just as a double check, it's kind of helpful.
Yes.
I know this is a busy spreadsheet, but I think it is probably kind of helpful.
The hard part about the amount needed, if you subtotal that, you would have situations like, you know, I'm just gonna click on one that's in front of my face here. Like, well, DD four lot twenty-eight was one that shows a negative figure, but it's because of outstanding warrants plus the interest gets their subtotal, then you got waivers that are coming in, so.
You don't want that subtracting from what's, oh, is the problem.
If, yeah, if or or even one that says, say, has ten thousand dollars cash in the account or whatever. If you look at your amount needed, you're gonna have positives and negatives that correlate in different ways. And it's not, it's probably not gonna be a accurate representation of what you would be assessing. Because like, say, sixty sub four, an improvement project that we just completed, we'd be looking at probably a two point nine to three million dollar assessment. But um if you plug that in and then you correlate with your positives and negatives with waivers, it's it's gonna end up in different ways. And it's, I don't think that would be an accurate.
I don't know, I'm going through the line, I'm on I'm on page two and everything matches.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying that would be a good double check.
Yeah.
Everything's the same except for the ones that of course have that little error, which that going forward will be fixed though.
Yes.
So I'm just saying when it is complete, that would be a good way to double check it. Because I I'm going through and they're the same.
I think what she's saying is to make sure the amounts are the same Kyle, not that that's the amount that's gonna be assessed. I we get your point there. The point she's making is to make do that double check to make sure there's no errors.
Yep, that would double check to make sure there's not errors. But if you're if you're looking to see of a total of like, are we assessing two million or three million dollars this year? If you have assessments that offset differences of where waivers are coming in or there's a cash balance, it's it's gonna change your figures because there's negative numbers in there.
I I think you're you're confusing the question.
Yeah, she she she's concentrating on the balancing part to make sure that we are matching.
That's what I'm concentrating on, I I mean, I get.
I thought you were, I thought you were looking for a total of what we would be assessing.
No, I said a total of those two columns, um the amount needed versus the levy. If the amount needed, that should be the same as the levy, and so far it is.
Yep.
So I mean, I don't.
Yep, once the units are plugged in for all of them.
Yeah.
Sorry, didn't mean to speak for you Amber.
No, that's okay, you were you were right on, that's what I was trying to say.
I think for for my to so that I make sure that I have everything correct, it would be helpful if we went line by line. I know that might take a little bit longer, but I think that would make it more accurate, if that's okay.
Yeah, it is okay.
I I think that's the only way to do it that really makes sense, but.
You think if we just do it by fund number?
Yeah. Just start at the top.
Yeah, so the first one, I don't think we need anything for that one. Fifty-one, six ninety-one, that's got a negative, so we shouldn't need anything there. Fifty-one, six forty.
See, I'm.
It's there.
So those those would be all in DD two and um let me see what our totals come to if those waivers are put together. I don't see any waivers for that one. What we've got?
Will the DD two main three A waivers cover that? And can you do that? I don't, I'm still learning how that works, but will those waivers cover lat three dash four?
Well, we would have to double check and see if that was supposed to be transferred across there depending on how it was assessed out. When it was done initially, I don't know, but if you combine those two above that, it still shows an amount needed of thirty-eight thousand with the adding those two in.
When you take those two minus the ninety thousand?
Actually. Uh we still got a subtotal on the other one, so hold on. Now, because that's gonna have to be, because there's an outstanding balance on line seven above that too. But on three dash two with the outstanding warrants and interest and subtotals, so. There's, yeah, there's gonna need to be an assessment there, but if you subtract the subtotal from the line above because those other waivers are probably offsetting that, I don't I don't know if that seventeen thousand would correlate to lat three dash four or not, I I don't know.
Well, and I.
There's a lot of complexity to those.
I could be doing this wrong, but if I take the amount needed minus the waivers due, I get twenty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's if those waivers can cover all three, the main three A, lat three dash two, and lat three dash four.
You're subtracting seventeen and thirty-five.
And the ten.
But.
Oh, because of the negative.
So that, that I don't think that would be correct because you're subtracting the waivers due, you're counting it there, but then your those waivers due are part of the formula that gets your amount needed.
Oh, I see, so I shouldn't be doing that.
Those would be doubled up.
Okay.
So.
I shouldn't do the ten then, so then it'd be thirty-seven something, thirty-eight.
But. But the line above in that subtotal, it has a twenty-four thousand, three ninety-seven that would be needed. So if you subtract that as a negative and then you add your other ones, it's like sixty thousand that would be needed because those bills would have to be paid too.
Yeah, but that twenty, that twenty-four thousand with the waivers due is already giving a negative ten.
It's giving a negative ten, but it would be like your your thirty-five thousand in waivers that are due for the second of those three gets you to the negative ten. So if you took your ninety-seven, four, nine point six, one, minus ten, eight, five, two, point six, six, minus seventeen, two ninety-seven, point six, seven, that would get you um what it would combine to across those three funds. I think it.
I guess the confusing part for me is if they're reclassified and they're separate, what's paid out of that should go into that and that's what the balance is. All this combining and stuff, that is not accurate information.
It's confusing.
It's confusing, so if it's reclassified, I mean, obviously, if it's not reclassified, it's all one. So if it's reclassified and there's a repair for a lateral, then those bills should be paid out of that fund or I might not be saying that correctly, and the money should come back into that fund. So then that's clear, like this money covered this repair, very clear and concise account.
So it when it's billed, like let's say Wrightsalls is doing improvement project, that includes laterals. Does he separate the bills out bilateral or does he do it in one big chunk?
So it depends.
That would be the only confusing part is how is it being billed?
Yeah.
It is, but it depends on whether the district is reclassified or not. If they are reclassified and they have separate schedules for each lateral, they should be billed separately and be specific to the landowners that are benefiting from it.
Yeah.
But if it's an if it's an old schedule where it's not reclassified and you have an entire district on one schedule with seven laterals inside that district, it that then it can't be because you only have one schedule.
Right.
So I think the only way to confirm this would be to go back when the assessments were done that resulted in those waivers being due and see what projects they were for. Because those previous assessment sheets that we have say, transfer to this fund, and that's some of the stuff we were looking at last night and realized that these other fund numbers have waivers and they're supposed to transfer to where the bills were originally written from. And the only way that I can make sense out of that is that would have been the only fund that was available at the time the bills were incurred, most likely. So I don't, I don't know if DD two, main three A, lat three dash two, lat three dash four, I don't know if those should be combined or not. I think the only way to figure that out is to go back to the old assessment schedules and see what it says for those to transfer.
Do you know?
Yeah, because it wouldn't be fair to combine them if they shouldn't be combined.
Yeah, and I don't know that answer off the top of my head.
If Donna and Kendall and Doug, we're we're not gonna be done by noon for handbook, just, I mean, welcome, sit in, just letting you know, so.
At some point, we need to probably just discuss this process because we just we keep on going very slowly.
I know, I know.
Maybe reevaluate that just because.
Well, we can come back to it after.
We can come back to it, I'm just saying, I don't want to waste your time sitting here.
Not today, not today, come back to it, come back to it.
Not if we want to work on this and we have the DD four, how are we gonna give any time to the handbook, right?
Yeah.
But sometimes, you know, maybe a little bit.
We need to discuss the process, yeah.
Yeah, but thank you.
Maybe that maybe that can be first thing on our next agenda, uh do our claims and stuff and deal with it at the beginning of our next meeting, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise you guys are sitting here and you probably have work to do.
Yeah.
Thanks, yep.
That would at least give it a more dedicated time.
Yeah. That that'd be good, that'd be good. Anyway, didn't mean to interrupt, but.
No, it's okay.
Okay, so do you want me to pull up assessment schedules from?
I don't know what year to look at.
Okay.
I mean, and maybe that's one we put an asterisk by and come back to it, I don't know.
Okay. All right, so we'll put an asterisk next to to those two.
And there'd be, yeah, three.
Okay.
DD, all the DD two ones, line six, seven, and eight.
Okay. So then we get to DD four.
This is another simple one. The amount in the column for FEMA funds due is what was previously presented to the board. The amount in the column for FEMA funds due is what was previously presented to the board, um. By the numbers I have based on what we turned in for closeout and all that with. The state ten percent and remainder from FEMA. I would be expecting another seven hundred and thirty one thousand, five fourteen and forty four cents, but that does include. Other projects around the county.
In addition, seven hundred and thirty one thousand in addition?
Yes, but there's other projects like for other DI's that Wrightsall did and Urkel things and Yemelins did in other areas of the county. And I don't have drainage district numbers for all of those, so. I think for.
Are you saying seven hundred and thirty one thousand total or seven hundred and thirty one thousand additional of this five ninety five?
No, I'm saying total for that FEMA project.
Okay, that's not how I just understood it.
Okay.
Yeah.
How you answered Tammy's question made it sound like it was a little different, but yeah, you're good.
So the total that I just read off was for all the DI's in that project for FEMA, which includes other. Other repair requests around the county.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Well, that makes smart sense.
I guess, yeah, and.
And and this is, this has been appealed, right? The FEMA has been appealed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what is our expected date of hearing from the appeal?
The state has to submit their recommendation to FEMA, I believe, by the end of next week. And then FEMA has ninety days max that they can respond to that appeal, so. We should know within three months, I would say, if they're still around. No, they will be, but.
It's.
Who, well, but we'll know what the state recommends?
Yeah, we'll.
By July fourth?
We'll have the state recommendation, I believe, they said by the end of next week, it has to be turned in, so it should be before that. Um, so yes, July fourth would be next Friday, the following Friday.
Does FEMA usually go with the state recommendation?
I don't answer that.
No?
I have no idea.
Yeah, that was probably a silly question.
I do know they have had. Substantial issues with other projects across the state with other counties as well, we are not the only ones dealing with this, um. And I would say there's some frustration at the state level for how it's being handled. At the federal level and they are doing what they can to help. Clean this up.
Yeah, and we got a lot, I mean, we obviously we have a lot of questions on the DD four stuff.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't wanna ask questions now, I I have some questions, but I think it's best if I do it when we're talking during a DD four workshop. You know, otherwise we're gonna, so can we?
We can keep moving and come back to that.
I mean, yeah, cause I think DD four definitely needs to have a good hard look.
Special attention.
Yes, so.
Well, I think to some degree. We can talk about and whether it's now or later, we can talk about whether we want to do an assessment for. That subtotal that's outstanding and assume nothing else is coming in and then when it comes in, deal with that or if we, um. Wait and see, I. Guess that's basically the options that are on the table as far as I'm concerned.
Well, my concern is we've appealed it, this is the second time we've appealed it?
No, this is the first time.
This is the first time we've appealed it?
Yep, there is a second appeal process and the second one goes to DC, I believe, or to headquarters for FEMA, so that gets two different people. The first one goes back to the same office that originally issued their determination. Um, and I was told by the state that they have had much more success at the second round of appeal than the first one. So I didn't get a percentage breakdown of what typically wins on the first one or gets reversed, but. They did say they've had much better success going to headquarters, um. But no, this is the first appeal, there was a. Request for information and stuff that's came before, but this is the first appeal.
We moving on from BD four then and coming back to that, okay?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, go down to. Five one zero seven six then? DD five west branch?
Yeah. Doesn't look like there's anything there.
Oh, there's a lot of DD four in between, which is why I said like laterals and subs and stuff, they're. Bad examples, cause there's a lot of laterals in there that are separate classifications, so. The DD four open ditch stuff is one topic, but there's other stuff like.
What are you saying, you wanna go through the laterals and stuff?
DD four, DD four. Well, like.
Can we just come back to the laterals?
Let's come back to DD four.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
If DD four is more complicated, how about we save that one for last?
That's fine.
Let's get through these other things.
I agree.
Because then I think we'll have a clearer brain on DD four if we do that.
So that'd be a line thirty four, looks like.
So then on one of these, like this next one, DD five west branch, it looks like when there's just waivers due. That just means waivers are gonna cover whatever it is, we don't need to worry about it. Hey, that's an easy one, put a check mark.
Well. I don't have anything outs, I don't have anything outstanding there because I don't believe there is anything outstanding when we went through that report.
No.
It wasn't one that got added from the outstanding report, so there's probably a cash balance there. There's probably nothing outstanding and there is waivers coming in, so yes, that one should be in good shape, nothing needed.
Same for the next one.
Good. DD twelve, it looks like there is something due.
DD twelve.
Is there a repair on that or what? That, does anybody know?
Not sure there are waivers for lateral three, but it doesn't look like it's quite enough. So. I'm assuming that that is. Something that had a project, but. I'm not sure.
Where is DD twelve?
Right under, oh, where is it? Sorry, never mind, never mind.
No, I I meant geographically.
Yeah, I figured that out after you said that.
It's okay.
Township and section.
It's not in my district.
DD twelve would be on the north side of Ledyard.
Oh, way up there, okay.
Yeah. I don't know, year of project draining, that would have been before. I started.
Oh.
So it does look like something is needed though. I think the biggest question or thing we need to double check is are those waivers on lateral three supposed to contribute towards that outstanding balance or not? Because that would make a difference.
If that's where it was billed out of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
If that's where it was billed out of and those, that money goes into that, then yeah, it would make a huge difference.
Yeah.
It would still need about a.
Eight thousand.
Eighty.
Yeah.
Eight thousand, forty two dollars and seventy two, seventeen cents.
Yeah.
We need answers on.
That's the big question at that.
How those transfer over or?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how, can. Can you see if someone in your office can get the, um, assessments that were done from. Probably twenty twelve till.
They're on that, they're on here.
Yeah, I think we have an assessment folder, don't we?
Um, well, this would be.
Oh, like all the older ones that the board would have approved?
Yeah, I think they're in here.
I thought they were in there.
Put the whole folder in.
Okay, so I have them back to twenty thirteen.
All of them?
Twenty thirteen.
Cause I would bet we would find.
Twenty fourteen. Twenty fifteen. Seventeen, eighteen. Nineteen. Twenty. Twenty one. Twenty two. Yeah, it looks like all of them except for. What was it, fourteen? There's one year that wasn't in there.
I don't know if it'd be easier to print off copies, like one copy of each or if it'd be easier to put them in a folder that we just looked through electronic copies, I don't know.
That'd be easy, if that's what you wanted to do.
If, yeah, if you wanna copy that whole folder into our drainage folder for today. We could all look at them on the computer. Try and divide up the years and see who can find it.
Yeah, cause you'd hate to. Double bill them.
Right.
If they're. But I don't know if that assessment schedule is gonna tell us if that's the same.
Okay, they should be there.
There we go. Yep. And I'll start with thirteen.
I should go through and re-label them so you can see what years they are.
It says thirteen has an assessment of nuclear engineering fees. Uh, seventy five oh eight.
Where are they? Cause it's not in my folder.
Um.
Yeah, it's in your drainage.
It's in drainage.
You're in drainage. You can go to the board folder.
Oh, okay, so they're not.
It's, it's in our packet.
Okay, I thought you were gonna put them in the assessment.
No, not everybody has that.
Okay, oh, gotcha.
Okay, so we're looking for DD twelve.
Yeah, if you're looking on twenty thirteen, you look at line eighteen.
It says wait, so it was probably fourteen, I guess.
Yeah.
You gotta tell where, uh, also there.
Okay, you have no, 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 I got there, so now I can, okay, so go to.
DD twelve, project in process and no assessment.
Go back to the original, uh, board meeting. So we'll go to drainage, we're drainage. Assesses. And yeah, there we are.
We're one, we have four years and we have four.
You gotta hover, I'm going through and renaming them. So that.
Yeah, not all of them have the years, but I think that's what they would do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not in fifteen. Sixteen's too low.
Sixteen has a bunch of stuff. Well, seventeen has a bunch of transfer funds to five one zero.
So sixteen is when the assessment's done, follow sixteen, it says.
Yep.
Transfer to fund fifty one zero nine four.
Which is that?
And it includes lat one, lat three.
Okay.
Um. So that all would have been from the same project, so we do need to include lateral, lateral three's waivers.
Okay. I see that one made out.
So if we do that, we should have an assess amount needed. Eight thousand, forty two dollars and seventeen cents.
What's the way to say it?
Eight thousand, forty two.
You think?
And seventeen cents. I I plugged in the formula you did on your calculator, so.
So amount, amount needed needs to change over then, yeah?
And the amount needed.
Well, the amount, the amount needed automatically changes if you.
Okay.
Put the, a formula for the dollar figure for those waivers up there, so that's why I.
Yeah, but where's the D? Where are you gonna put that it's needed?
You're gonna have to put it in DD twelve.
Yeah, so.
Five one zero nine four.
Yeah, that's.
The only, you would probably need to break it down by percentage of the original assessment, I guess. Because it was assessed out to the main tile, lateral one and lateral three. Or we need to look back at the engineer's report and find that project and how those costs are given up.
But it doesn't look like there's anything due in those other two funds, so.
No, so those way, those have probably been paid off, there's no more waivers coming in. So we need to find that project and find out how it needs to be split out. But that assessment would have been short at the time.
Okay, so for right now, I'm just putting eighty forty two seventeen, um, five one zero nine four. Correct?
I'll probably put a note that it'll need to be split between those three, it'll be between. Fifty one, six, six, nine, fifty one, six, seven, four and fifty one, six, seven, five. It looks like lateral three had an authority of it. But that's what the assessment.
Six fifty one, six, seven, four.
Six fifty one, six, seven, four.
I don't see that on, it's not on the current one.
I don't either.
It's lateral one. Based on the twenty sixteen assessment schedule.
Yeah.
It's not on.
It's not on.
It's not on here.
It's probably not. So that means there's.
Fifty one, six, seven, four.
So that means it didn't show up on their outstanding or waiver list. So there's nothing outstanding and there's no waivers for it, that's why it's not on that assessment.
So we wouldn't wanna divide it for that one then?
Yeah, we would, because that's how it was originally assessed.
But it's showing P, you, but you said it's showing P.
But the assessment at the time was not enough to cover the bills that were there at the time.
Well, it is now.
There's, there was probably no bills associated with that if it was reclassed, there wouldn't have been a schedule for it at the time, so all the bills were put on the.
Then how can?
The fund that shows outstanding.
Okay, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if the bills were paid out of that fund, isn't that where the waivers should? Go and the assessment should go to pay that, correct?
Hmm, so the outstanding thirty three thousand, nine, nine, four would be on. Fifty one, zero, nine, four, it just says DD twelve. That's probably the old schedule before it was reclassed, so when the checks were written to contractors and engineers and everybody else.
Yeah.
They were paid through that fund.
Right.
That fund is no longer a schedule, it would, that's the old schedule that would be outdated, so.
But that's.
The new, the new schedules and the new laterals would be needing to pay those bills.
Well, I think we're gonna need to talk to Nick about that because. He's gonna be able to tell us what funds are gonna need, uh, funds and which aren't. And that's where it's, I mean, it doesn't do any good to put funds in an account that doesn't need any and then short a fund that does.
Yeah. Yeah, then we're not, you're confusing the issue further.
Yeah, you're not, yeah, you're not doing.
Does.
It correctly.
So we probably need to do some kind of a comparison between what Nick has as balances in those funds. Negative balances, if it's negative, that means we need money compared to our assessment schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And that probably needs to be done every year when we're doing assessments.
Right, but this is showing, uh. A balance that's due of almost thirty four thousand and that schedule is probably not in use anymore because of the reclassification. So you probably can't send a bill off that schedule, or if you did, it wouldn't be accurate to what was approved.
No, but we still need to know what's being shown in those different funds as due, that should match what we need to assess.
Which would be the reason, which would.
So that's all on there, that's on the cell sheet.
Which would be the reason for the transfers before, transferring from one account to another.
Nick's.
Yeah, that would, that would be why you transfer it, to pay off those bills.
So Nick's balances are on here?
Well, it's got an ending. Well, it's got an ending cash balance, outstanding warrants, the interest would be to December first, I believe, Tammy, right?
Yeah.
And then the subtotal is the self calculation of the two of them, or those three lined up. So that's on there, that's from our solution program.
From the treasurer's side?
Yeah, there's a treasurer's report that we can run, yeah.
So that's, that's the balance that's due, it's just where does it get paid from?
I got a, you know, a development meeting I could go to, or if you're present, I would go to, or you can break for lunch, or?
It's one fifty four.
Yeah.
That was planned.
We need to break, uh, well, I, I really would like to break for lunch, yeah.
I
I would too.
I mean, we need
I'm supposed to meet, have a quick meeting too, so, but, yeah, we, we probably should break and come back to it. Some point, we've, we haven't gotten very far here, but
No. We, we may need more time, substantially more time after, you know.
I, I have to be done by
Amy's done at three fifteen.
Three fifteen. Sorry.
So we've got
I had sent that out.
We've got, yes, you did, we've got a little over two hours this afternoon.
Well, so we go to your meeting, yes.
Okay.
Who are we breaking now and?
Well, you don't finish
Should we come back at like one fifteen, cause how, your meeting go till one?
God, I don't know, how do you know that?
Yeah, you
They said they did not work, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. They says. Well, we'll resume at one fifteen.